Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being with us today for our June, April Board Meeting. Madam Board Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Bueno. Trustee Henderson.
Here.
Trustee Hernandez. Trustee Hoffman.
Here.
Trustee Ino.
Here.
Trustee Vela. Trustee Veras.
Thank you so much. Now, we'll have VP Ino do the flag salute.
Stand. I hand over your hearts.
Thank you.
Today, we would like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Isaac Lamelli. Isaac, a long-term East Los Angeles College professor in the English Department, passed away on April 23rd, 2024, at Kaiser Hospital in Downey, surrounded by his family after complicated complications from pancreatitis. Isaac began teaching as an adjunct faculty in the English Department in 2017. After teaching middle school and high school PE for several years, Isaac graduated from Chapman University with dual master's degrees in English and creative writing. He often expressed that ELAG students were an absolute joy to work with and that he enjoyed teaching for the first-year Experience Program due to his teaching background. He was also a wrestling coach at Santa Ana High School, Santa Ana College, and more recently at Laserna High School in Whittier. Isaac leaves behind a seven-year-old son, Joshua "John" Godinez Lamelli, who they called JoJo, and wife Patricia. On behalf of the entire Los Angeles Community College District community, we extend our deepest condolences to the Godinez and Lamelli founders at this most difficult time. So if we can have a moment of silence for Mr. Lamelli. Thank you. Chancellor, I'll have you address Item B.
Up here, we're gonna give you center stage here. I'll hold this and simply repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Amber Bayham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
As student trustee of the Los Angeles Community College District.
As student trustee of Los Angeles Community College.
Congratulations, Amber.
All right. Welcome, Student Trustee Bayham. We are excited to have you join us on the board, and we are here to mentor and assist you in this journey. Please know that my board colleagues, the chancellor, and I are here to answer any questions that you may have and to help you better advocate on behalf of LACC D students. So now, on to Item C. The First Amendment and the Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee or public official in the performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public business rather than on private or unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect defamatory statements made which may subject the speaker to personal liability. Are there any members of the public, Madam Board Secretary, in addition to those that requested to speak?
No, we have the eight signed up for agenda items at the very top.
All right, so we'll move on to public comment. Speakers, you have three minutes to speak. We have 20 minutes for this item, so please honor the three minutes so that everybody that has signed up to speak may do so. So first, we have Mr. Rolando Cuevas. Item C1. No, that's just public comment. So can you tell us what item you want to speak on?
Yes, one second, Miss Henderson, let me gather myself. Okay, I'm speaking to the chancellor's report.
What specifically?
Okay, but before I go on, hold my clock a little bit. I've complained many times, Miss Henderson, that the chancellor does a disservice to the public because he's on the board agenda, but he never pulses his agenda on the website for us to know what he's going to speak to, but he has three general categories, and I'm going to speak to pending issues, period. Is that okay? Miss Dega, thank you. Okay, so please do not interrupt me, anybody, because you guys are always interrupting me. Okay. President Henderson, on behalf of the taxpayers of the city and county of Los Angeles, thank you for your declaration that sets the record straight as a witness to the disgraceful action of Steve Veras that General Counsel Marlon Medina laid out in her lawsuit against trustee Steve Veras and Chancellor Rodriguez personally. Trustee Veras, you have sat in your seat for months, lying and playing a victim to your charges to the public. And your fellow trustees, the public now knows what we always have known about you. You are a liar and a narcissist. You thought you would get away by denying, but the truth always comes out and has come out very loud that your actions were disgraceful. The vicious takedown coordinated by the chancellor and Steve Veras of a qualified Latina lawyer who graduated from both law schools just because she did not play along, covering up the corruption taking place and doing her legal obligation, exposing the illegal activities on the following contract, Exinger, the sheriff's contract, the 10-100 West LA contract. I want the chancellor to explain to everyone in attendance today who granted him the authority to approve the expenditure to pay for the legal fees for trustee Steve Veras' personal action, not business or board-approved action towards General Medina. He should pay for his own legal fees. Here is my million-dollar question. Was there a board approval to pay for Veras' legal bills? We all deserve to know the right now. Remember, trustees, Veras and Chancellor Rodriguez are being sued for their personal actions, not LACC D business. The board should demand that trustee Veras, Veras, please look at me when I speak, that trustee Veras resign in total disgrace today. He has no business being a board trustee member because of his behavior. The trustees can no longer be blind and deaf to the corruption, deaf to the corruption, deaf to the corruption taking place at the district from the board trustees to people right behind me to middle management and upper management. Finally, I recommend the board that President Henderson inform all local enforcements to come in and clean up LACC D once and for all so we could find out who are the real crux. Okay? That was disrespectful. Phone should be off. I'm talking. And also, finally, I want to say, Miss Henderson, sincerely, it took a lot of courage to do what you did. And I know you have some colleagues up there that are probably going to mess around with you. But I'm going to defend you, and there's a lot of people in the public that want our public officials to be held to a higher standard. None of this crap. This has to end. Shame on Chancellor Rodriguez, shame on Steve Veras, and shame on the board for being deaf. You have to open up your eyes. You just, someone's paying his legal bills. Can't you ask that question? That's a gift of public funds. So a personal lawsuit. So personally, he's not acting as a trustee. He's being sued as a personal person, and that man right there is laughing because he's paying the bills and he's running amok in this district. Thank you. Have a great day, and I'll be back at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Oh, and real quick, and here's the declaration so everybody doesn't think I'm flying us over.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Angela.
Next up, we have Mr. Manning Rahal. Mr. Rahal, are you speaking on Item F1? Or something?
There's been a change, so we reduced the number of speakers to two plus our labor representative. So we're going to do, we're going to be speaking on the labor representatives portion of the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have Carlos Diaz. Oh. Okay, gonna wait, okay. All right, thank you. Okay. There's someone on Zoom with their hands up. Are they asking to speak there for public comment? You know? Okay.
But they're not on the move. That mean?
Hello, for the username Stevensloan54, if you can please state your topic for the public comment. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your topic.
Actually, I don't have a topic. I was just tuning in to witness this swearing in of my granddaughter Amber, Amber Bayham.
For joining the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Congratulations, Amber.
Did you want to say something to your granddaughter?
Are you speaking to me or Amber?
Yes. Yes, I'm asking you if you wanted to.
No, I just wanted to let her know how proud I am of her and just to keep up the good work. We're all so proud of her.
That's wonderful. Thank you for signing in.
Thank you for having me.
So for Item D, Agenda, Approval of the Agenda and Order of Business. The Los Angeles Community College District recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Tongva, Tatavian, Surrano, Kish, and Chumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation into elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work and to teach and educate on these ancestral lands. We're dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including the San, the Fer de Nenio Tatavian Band of Mission Indians, the Gabrieleno Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, the Gabrieleno Tongva San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, the Gabrieleno Band of Mission Indians Kish Nation, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, and the San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. Chancellor, at this point, are there any changes to the agenda and order of business?
Yes, Madam President, the members of the board, there are two corrections to be made on Consent Calendar for Human Resources. The items are M2 and M3. For M2, the Status Advancement List has been updated due to the need for corrections of location and status for multiple faculty. And for M3, the Tenured List has also been corrected due to the resignation of one faculty member. The agenda will be amended to include the revised list and members of the board. We did print out the corrected information in front of you. It's at your desk. So we want to make sure that you have that in front of you. So please note on the consent items related to Human Resources, Items M2 and M3, we have two corrections. Other than that, everything else proceeds as ordered. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Colleagues, may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda and order of business with the requested amendments? Moved by VP Ino.
Second.
Second by trustee Vela. Madam Board Secretary, roll call, please.
Student trustee Bayham, thank you. Trustee Bueno. Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez. Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vela.
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, on to Item D2. May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting in closed session from May 1st, 2024, the special meeting from April 17th, 2024, and the special meeting and closed session from May 15th, 2024. Moved by VP Ino. Second. Thank you, by student trustee Bayham, her first name. Madam Board Secretary, roll call, please.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote.
I've seen.
Trustee Bueno. Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vela. Trustee Veras.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, on to Item E1. Join us today as, joining us today is Professor Fatima Baldowala. And as she comes up, I'm going to give a little introduction. Professor Baldowala is a faculty at LA Valley College. She is an entrepreneur that believes in innovation and embeds NASA technology into her curriculum. She is an issuer of Citizen Entrepreneurial Digital Badges. And in 2023, she and her students came in third place in the United Nations Global Sustainability Challenge, earning cash prizes and digital badges. Early this year, she received an international award in Teacher Excellence by the Dawudi Bara Community Education Department at a ceremony held in Surat, India. And in addition to all of this, she is a poet. So please welcome her as she presents the poem that she wrote for and presented at the APITA graduation on May 18.
Very quickly, can I just thank a few people? Okay. I just want to begin by thanking you for that wonderful introduction and always for your support. I'm going to begin by giving a quotation by my chancellor. Chancellor Roderick West told a class of 2024, "Your persistence is your resistance." And as we faculty know, graduation is a tangible outcome of what we do. And it's a ceremony where we celebrate our students going on to bigger, greater things. Three years ago, I watched Amanda Gorman giving the inauguration poem for President Joe Biden, and that's when I kind of decided, oh, our graduation ceremonies need poetry. And at the APTA committee meeting, when I suggested if I could do the poem for the graduation, Dr. Kelsey, you know, I want to thank you. You jumped onto the idea and you made it really easy, followed by classified faculty at Harbor College, Felisa Sylvia, and Ben, who is the chancellor's assistant, who made it happen, the poem that you're going to see. I got a few students, runners-up, who wanted to be valedictorians, Frances, Tony, and Precious, whose words, I was basically their poet-capturer. I took their words, and what you're going to hear is the poem that I captured with their words and I created. But it would be incomplete if by digital artist Ariel Olschansky did not put visuals to the words, because as everyone knows, pictures are worth a thousand words. So I want to thank Ariel. And I'm going to end by saying 10 years ago, I don't think the chancellor remembers this, but he said, "LACC D is like Lady Liberty. She is radical hope." The title of the poem is Radical Hope. So go ahead and take a look.
Mabuhay. I am a proud first-generation Filipina. In Cavite, Philippines, I first drew breath, seeking life beyond death. On American shores beckon opportunities galore, studying to become a nurse and more.
Umasdika. I am a second-generation Filipino with Mexican roots. Fleeing the Philippines, resilient yet astute, on American shores trapped by racist hate. Studying forensics and its crimson clues, telling stories will be my defining trait.
Suasray. I am a first-and-a-half-generation Cambodian-American. My family fled from genocidal horrors. The story unfolds on this land. The American dream holds. In college, the study of anatomy sealed the deal. Studying nursing too, I seek to heal.
What is love? Faith and family, extending out to community. Greeting our elders monopot to show our respect. Celebrating our victories and learning from our failures.
What is love? It is family and friends and anyone who's kind. Making mistakes and how my people love me, even when I'm acting blind.
What is love? A father to protect me from the scares within night. A mother learning to read and write. My parents, smiling more than they did growing up.
What is courage? Meeting different cultures, needing to learn the correct English, the courage to act on my words.
What is courage? A space to feel safe. School taught me to think for myself. I think of stories of heroes destined to save, helping others even when they can't win the fight.
What is courage? Kids who look like me, standing up for what we believe. Freedom to express our opposition, picketing is a rite of passage of growing up, embracing diversity of thought.
In college, we stretch and grow, exploring the sky, learning that we are free, as free as our mind.
I think of my own inaction. I think of my friends protecting me and their powerful words reaching mine. I think of my own hurt and not forming a strong reaction. How lost I was until I found my own way out to shine.
We stand with locked arms, shoulder to shoulder, students on fire, filled with righteousness. History is our witness.
Radical hope. We belong in this space. In college, I found my place. Asian-Pacific-American student success.
Radical hope is my education, where I came from and where I'll go. All the destinations I wish to explore, how I'll get there and who I'll know.
Radical hope? Affirming my roots, dreams take flight. I think of all my failures and radical hope whispers, "You're still here." Many nights spent in fear, graduation marks our daring flight.
But deep inside.
Deep, deep inside.
Deep, deep inside.
Resides radical hope. It is the phoenix rising from the ashes. We rise above, fueled by love.
Guided by courage and action bold, like a free bird, it flies.
Finding our way, we will seize the day.
Disallowing me to disappear.
Disallowing me to disappear.
Disallowing me to disappear.
I stand tall.
I stand tall.
I stand tall.
Brilliant and resilient.
Brilliant and resilient.
Brilliant and resilient.
I'm thinking for that. Professor Baldowala, at the APITA graduation, we were very moved by this, by this poem. It's beautiful, the graphics and everything just touched, I think, everybody's heart. And I also want to say that Professor Baldowala doesn't just walk the talk she, talk it, she walks it. Her son participated in the graduation ceremony, which I thought was really beautiful, I think made this poem even more special. So I'd like to give my colleagues an opportunity, if you'd like, to make a comment, say some words, ask a question, if anybody.
I just want to say, Professor, I've known you for several years, and thank you for representing us. You make LACC D pride, proud. I just wanted to say thank you.
I would also like to add, it just shows the significance of the arts and how it reminds us of our purpose and our souls. And I know you want to be our district-wide poet laureate, and I would love to support that process. So thank you so much for your creativity and your kindness and just love.
Thank you, Professor. It just shows that we have so many talented faculty members and staff and minds in the LA Community College District, and you are one of them and a shining star, so thank you so much.
Thank you, colleagues. Again, this was absolutely beautiful, and thank you for being here. And I really thank you for the work that you do. I don't think that there will be a time that I don't support you, but thank you. So next up, we have Item F. The Ralph M. Brown Act and the LACC D's Board Policy, BP 2340, provides the opportunity for a member of the public to place a discussion item on the agenda. And we have received a public request from Jordan Slack, president of the Student Power at Los Angeles City College, to speak. Okay, so may I have a motion and a second, colleagues, on Item F1?
So moved.
Moved by VP Ino.
Bayham, second.
Thank you. And second by student trustee Bayham. Madam Board Secretary, can we? uh student trustee Bayham. Um Madam Board Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yeah.
Trustee Veres.
I I'm sorry, we're on item?
F. F one?
F one?
Discussion.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So um at this time, I'd like to um welcome Mr. Slack to the podium.
Thank you. First pride was a riot. That's the slogan I hear every June, but it lacks context. What we now call pride was birthed out of the Chicano power, black power, anti-war and college campus occupation movements of the sixties. We rightfully celebrate black and brown trans women like Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera as leaders in the Stonewall Rebellion. But did you know that they were also leaders of an organized collective called STAR or Street Transvestite Action Revolutionaries? Our terms have evolved since then. We say transgender, but in the STAR manifesto archived in the New York Public Library, they outlined a political program and made concrete demands. Number six of STAR's nine demands reads as follows. Transvestites and gay street people and all oppressed people should have free education, healthcare, clothing, food, transportation, and housing. In fact, STAR's main political activity wasn't riots. It was the Star House, a building they managed to provide housing for LGBTQ people because they're disproportionately affected by homelessness and job discrimination. So if you trustees are going to ride around on floats all month and hang a rainbow flag in this very meeting during this item, I hope you'll be honoring its legacy and its true meaning, which has always come with a demand for housing. Votes have provided immediate and ongoing rent relief for the many queer people in your district. To celebrate pride, cut the check. Besides the housing being a queer issue, it's also a race issue. According to the district website, the majority of LACC D students are of Latino descent. Many of them are dreamers or undocumented, which means racist laws push them into the lowest wage jobs and make it especially difficult to secure housing. According to a twenty-fourteen analysis by the Center for Economic and Policy Research, quote, Hispanic workers are more likely than workers of any other race or ethnicity to be in poverty. Black students also face significant hurdles to studying with the lowest graduation rates. Due to the systematic denial of housing through practices like redlining and the prison industrial complex, many are forced to drop out to work low-wage jobs just to survive. Both have disproportionately high rates of unemployment. But unemployment rates drop drastically the more higher education gets completed. So the only reason to be withholding rent relief from black and brown students is to keep their labor cheap and exploitable. Change course and remove this racist housing barrier from community college. Si se puede and Black Lives Matter means cut the check. Beyond gender, sexuality and immigration status, race, this housing project also concerns our faculty. I want to commend the district academic senate, which represents over four thousand of our own professors on delivering their historic vote of no confidence against this entire board of trustees and the chancellor. Students stand behind every demand in their May sixteen press release as they reflect what we have been saying for eight months. The corrupt practices that funnel billions of public dollars into trustee and campaign donor pockets while students starve and die in the street must end. The professors cited facing harassment, discrimination and retaliation for speaking up. We students have faced the same when we speak of, whether it's through your deans, administrators, or your puppet student government. We echo the professor's vote of no confidence at every level of district governance. It's time to use our funds responsibly and meet the demands of constituents instead of punishing them for asking. If you want to restore confidence, cut the check. Lastly, let me make clear what our demands are again. As a reminder, the first time we delivered these was in October of twenty-twenty-three at a public forum. You had requested feedback on your plan to use the voter-approved five hundred million dollars for Measure L.A. to build a small number of dorms that would take eight or more years. That lecture hall packed with non-traditional students, which reflects the majority of the district, Student Power synthesized what that room literally cried out to you on that day. That L.A. is already full of empty apartments and fifty-five percent of your district are about to lose the one they're in. We don't need to build, we need to pay the rent. Since then, these demands have been endorsed over a hundred and fifty times. During the same time, you've used our money to help bomb every single university in Gaza, assassinate Palestinian professors and slaughter thousands of students in a genocide for profit. You presented plans to build housing while your investments have destroyed more than eighty percent of the housing stock in Gaza. Student encampments have started on campuses everywhere and one in five of your district students already lived in one. Given the current climate of worldwide resistance against imperialism, our four demands are not at all radical. Take it from a political science major, it's in all of our best interests for you to meet them. Here are the demands again. One, create immediate housing solutions. Establish a rent voucher program now that utilizes existing empty apartments to provide rapid relief for housing insecure students and workers. Two, student oversight. Form a student worker council to oversee the planning and implementation of long-term housing projects. Three, transition graduates. Develop a comprehensive transition program to assist graduating students in securing their next housing situation. And four, expedite plans. Treat housing as the emergency it is. Expedite the process for vouchers and building. The current plan from the LACC Board of Trustees falls short of the urgent needs of the district. In short, cut the check. Now, before you respond, let me just say that I made first after you heard from all the suffering students, the chancellor, some board members and Dr. Gabru, president of LACC, told us that the resources are already there. There's already the housing, just go and access them. First of all, shame on you for gaslighting the thousands of unhoused and starving students. That day, you released a list of existing resources at LACC in an email, none of which meet our demands. But before that, existing resources were not transparent. And to this day, students have to fill out a very vague questionnaire and then hope someone offers the right thing. What we hear from students is that oftentimes no one gets back to them about their applications. And if they do manage to get a response, it's a roll of the dice each time. And some believe who gets introduced to what has a racial factor. Furthermore, the Cares Network office is staffed with largely student workers who are paid less than minimum wage. They are not paid to be social workers and this creates yet another barrier to entry. So when you respond today, please refrain from harmful gaslighting and invalidating of our lived experiences. Make a motion with solutions. Trustees, chancellor, Amber, cut the damn check. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slack. Thank you. So the board to have a discussion. Um colleagues, uh so um what we'll do is um I'll call a point of information. Chancellor?
Yes, thank you so much and students, thank you for presenting this item uh to the board of trustees. The board will now engage in its conversation on the item itself. Uh what I'd like to do is background and context for the board and for its consideration of uh of the discussion items and the requests that have been made uh from uh the students is to have a presentation and an overview by our vice chancellor of Educational Programs and Institutional Effectiveness, Dr. Nicole Alba Lopez. And what she will do, members of the board, uh she will share with you uh the information that we have provided, services that are available and the way that we disseminate this information at each of the college campuses, just so you can have as background as to how we try to address and serve the needs of students at our respective institutions. Then let me ask a point of order for the uh to a general counsel. There's a speaker who'd like to speak to this item that we inadvertently overlooked. It's a public speaker, Matt Church?
Yeah, we have a speaker that was placed um I guess in another
Oh, could we?
Under another item that I believe wanted to speak on this item.
You may proceed, President Henderson, to give your your uh approval to have them speak at this time before the item is discussed fully and moved um and voted on.
Okay, um Mr. Quavis, you wanted to speak on F one? Okay, so you have three minutes. Three, three, three.
As those students were speaking, I thought about my experience thirty-eight years ago at East L.A. College when we were always fighting for student rights and student injustice. And it's pretty sad when these kids come before you for help. Listen, I understand a lot of money strict is restricted, but there's a lot of foundation money that's readily available that they can unlock right now to give them money. If you chose to, the same way you buy tables for every community event that you guys go to spend five, ten thousand bucks to have a chicken dinner, why don't you give those ten thousand bucks to those students so they have somewhere to stay and live with dignity? Without students, there is nobody in this district, including the AFT. They need to understand that the AFT is not the client of the district, it is the student first. And we always forget that the student is first, although we always come here and brag about student, student this, student that. Well, look, here they are. What solution do you have today? Not theoretical two years. In two years, those kids will be hungry, dead in jail or at a university if you don't save them. Okay, you have a lot of foundation money, unlock the foundation money. Instead of going to dinners, give them the money. We already have billions for all the developers here. We already gave millions to the faculty and they get pennies. And you're elected to represent the students, not the interest in this room. Everybody here is here because of them, including everybody on top here. Thank you for that opportunity, Ms. Henderson. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Quavis. Uh so now, Vice Chancellor.
Good afternoon. Lupe, do we have the presentation? Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for giving us a moment to share a little bit of the work that's happening at the colleges uh regarding students' basic needs, support services and programs. Uh we work with each of the colleges to put together essentially a slide deck that outlines the services that each of our our colleges have. Um within the slide deck itself, it will link, uh you can link on the PDF and it will um take you to the Basic Needs Center page for each college. Um for the most part, if you just would click to the next slide, please. Um each of our colleges have organized their centers in similar but a little bit different ways. City College has a City Cares Network, um East L.A. College has a Basic Needs Center, Harbor College has what they call Seahawk Essentials, um Mission College has their Basic Needs Center, Pierce College has the Brahmodega, Southwest College has a Basic Needs Center as well. Titec has the Basic Needs Program, which I think they were the last one that just launched. Valley has a Basic Needs Center. Um and as you can see here, we have these wraparound support services available to students. Um we are primarily focused on district-wide um activities. If you'll go to the next slide, please. Uh we have at each of our locations a loss of housing liaison. Each location has a food pantry. We've also expanded our CalFresh support to help our students sign up for CalFresh. We have various ways and mental health services are provided to students, whether that be in person or online. We have access to our Metro Go Pass program for transportation. We have childcare referrals. And each of our centers also has uh basic hygiene products available to our students. Um, some of the institutions have been able to work with film thopit groups and others uh to expand what they would have as a clothing closet. Um many of our programs offer also offer grocery cards. Students can, you know, go and buy groceries. Uh we have transportation support, so it's as gas cards. Many of the colleges also have case managers on staff that actually will work on that holistic viewpoint for students. Uh we are seeing expansion of ready-to-eat meals where students can just pop in and pick up the grab-to-go meal on the fly. Uh we see laptop owners often, um hi-fi, wifi hotspots. Uh a few of our colleges have farmers markets and students can use their CalFresh benefits to access those uh fresh fruits and vegetables at the farmer's market. And the large majority of our colleges have timely care, which is mental health support, uh anytime, anyplace, um available through an app online. So these are just some of the basic need supports that I would say in the last five years, especially, we've really expanded across the district. A few years ago, not all of our locations had a basic designated basic need center, or we each now have one that's readily available for students. Um and the primary focus of those centers is to become a safe spot where students can come in and receive referrals and resources. And then the faculty and staff and and others at the campus will, you know, work with those students and provide them um resources in the community, uh whether that be housing, transportation, et cetera. And so a lot of this is relationship building, it is networking and being able to leverage what others do well and provide that referral service to our basic needs uh teams at the college campuses. We wanted to provide a snapshot of that information for the board so that they're aware of what is happening across each of our nine locations.
Thank you. Uh so at this time, because I agree with the students, um and again, students, uh um thank you for being here. And I do understand how it feels to be gaslit and um when you're making a valid point or asking a question and want some information. However, However, we do have a Student Basic Needs Committee. And so if you guys are agreeable, when is the next meeting? This Friday. So we have a public Student Basic Needs Committee meeting that will happen this Friday. And what I would move is to refer your concerns to that committee so that that committee can discuss immediate housing concerns. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I can say a few words about that. So, thank you, President Henderson. And thank you, students, for your passion. But most importantly, for me, thank you for centering the need for student housing and for basic needs. Again, at our board meeting, it's something that I am extremely passionate about. I'm spending probably the majority of my time here on this board working on this issue. I want to start, though, before we get into some of the basic needs work, I just want to clarify a few things to respond to some of your ideas. First off, just so that this is on the record and we're clear, because I don't want there to be miscommunication, bond money cannot be used for rent vouchers. That is per Prop 39. All local bond measures fall under California state law. And so even if the Board of Trustees, if we wanted to use our $500 million for one-time rent relief, we would not be able to according to law. So I want to just make sure that that's front and center.
I'm sorry, I have a question. You said it can't be used for rent vouchers, or it can't be used for rent relief?
It can't be, it can only be used for construction and acquisition. And there's a few other things, but it cannot be used in that sort of form.
Oh, okay.
The way that the bond was passed, passed in Missouri LA. So, that being said, I think that there are a lot of really valid points that were brought up by the students. And I absolutely hear you all loud and clear for pushing the agenda for more immediate and faster housing solutions. And I know I also sit on the FIPAC Committee and my colleagues on that committee, Trustee Vella, Trustee Eno, we've been working on some efforts to make sure that we can do that, and that will be brought up later in the meeting. But I definitely would encourage participation in our Basic Needs Committee. I want to say, it has been such an extremely humbling experience to work with our Basic Needs coordinators, which are comprised of both faculty and classified staff that are doing this work every day, the work that is coming out of Southwest, the work that is coming out of East LA, the work that is coming out of Mission. All, I mean, I could say amazing things about all of these campuses. It is hard work. We are not just putting in $10,000 here, $10,000 there, as a speaker just mentioned. We are putting in millions of dollars to make sure that we are supporting students and their basic needs. We know that's not enough. We know that. We are dealing with a housing crisis, a homelessness crisis, and affordability crisis. And I know that this district is doing more than any other district in this state. That being said, we need the input of students, and we welcome you at those meetings. And so Friday at Pierce College at 9:00 AM, we invite you to be there. We are continuously working with students who are receiving our Basic Needs Services. There will be students there that are actively being housed right now, who are homeless and housing insecure. We are constantly working to evolve our program. And so we would definitely welcome others who may not be part of those programs, but would like to weigh in to be at that meeting. So thank you.
If you don't mind, if I could speak? Okay, so thank you, Jordan. As a, we said puppet, as a puppet, ASG puppet, I was supposed to give a little bit of background on myself when I first started. So I want to thank my mom and my son for being here, first off. Also, my purpose of being here is to be effective. I am a non-traditional student. I'm a student parent. I have a 15-year-old child, and I have experienced homelessness. So I think that when you talk about homelessness or someone being homeless, and then you redirect them to a committee meeting that's on Friday, they are considering where they're going to sleep tonight. So that is, it's more than a passion, you know what I mean? It's shelter, it's safety, it's public health and public safety. So I think we have to also consider the sensitivities that come in the day-to-day, like the thought of where you're going to take a shower, where your clothes are, and where you're going to park, and all those things are coming to play when you're thinking about being homeless. So it's more than like giving staff members and committees a pat on their back for coming to work and doing their job and getting iced coffee and stuff like that. We actually have to do, I do agree with Jordan. I don't necessarily always agree with the way that he does things. But I do agree with that there needs to be more of a solution-based. You're saying these people are housed, but with City CARES and a lot of those things that were on that slide, which is lovely, there is a harsher scrutiny for students. Some students are not even asked or directed to the application process to even really have real data and real numbers. So I think we have to really consider sensitivity training for an actual people, inviting people to be a part of the table when you're actually listening and not being reactive, but being actually listening to the services that are being asked of students. I'm sorry, asked of the board, yeah.
Let me, let me be clear. This is a standing, this is a standing committee meeting, so that is an invitation to join an existing committee meeting. I'm always available. I'm always available. I know that students have reached out to me over social media via email. I'm always available to meet. My schedule is not dictated by a standing committee. And so, and I think that probably goes for most of the trustees on this board, that, you know, that's not a very stringent request that people come show up at our existing meetings. It's an invitation to join. But absolutely, I think that we all are open to that, and that's why we're having this discussion here today.
Thank you for that comment, Student Trustee Bam. So I want to be very clear. The recommendation to move a discussion to the Student Basic Needs Committee is for them to discuss the immediate need. The invitation was for participation, because they have the meeting once a month. So we do understand literally that students are here today speaking and may not have a place to sleep tonight. So I want to make that, I'm very clear. So administration and staff are being asked to address this issue immediately in terms of immediate need and in terms of what we can do sooner than later. So I want to make that very clear. Okay? And so is there a second? Did you want to make a comment? Go ahead.
Two things I want to just, and hopefully, Gordon, whoever from, from the presenters here can help me clarify here. On the immediate housing solutions, bullet point number one, it says, "Provide rapid relief for housing insecure students and workers." Did you mean workers or student workers? Workers in general or student workers? Student workers, okay. And then in terms of the transition for graduates piece, comprehensive transition program. So I'm going to, I'm going to take from that, and I just want to know if this is a correct interpretation, that when students are not necessarily, either they've gotten their certificate or transferred, they're not necessarily an LACC student, but there is a window of time that you would like to, if there's housing provided or resources provided, that it would be extended to that group until some period of transition gets developed in this program. So just wanted to be clear with that, because that, there's, I'm trying to zero in on students, student workers in this piece here, so.
Yeah, so with regard to transitioning graduates, I mean, first of all, you know, you have staff, social workers, experts who should be able to further develop this. And however, it would likely include more than just extending the timeframe, but, you know, helping them find an apartment, helping them with whatever it is. Everyone's situation is different, but whether it's with employment, it's, it's a program to help people not just be dropped out of a program that they're relying on for their basic needs. It's helping them transition out of it, whatever that may look like for that person.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, LSA has a problem-solving department, and that's what they're called. There, it would be like pots and pans, or if you need help with furniture, or, you know, moving items that are necessary, first and last month's rent. If you need help with like a three-time, paying rent for three months, or like a system like that. So it is case by case, but it is a problem-solving department that has, you know, a blow-by-blow of how you would be able to chart out that.
Thank you.
That's the basic need.
No, 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 that's LSA.
That, that's, she, Amber pointed out something I wanted to include in the conversation that takes place, that this, especially in that transition piece, it's something that we should work with the city and the county. LSA is obviously the joint program between the two of them. But that, it's a critical area, because it's hard, because I know most dormit or student housing have like a move-in date and a move-out date, and they do these kind of contracts. I think what's being talked about there is connected to the greater overall housing insecurity that exists in the city. And well, and it's important, but I think as we do it, we need to have both the city and the county and probably LSA at the table as well.
Thank you. And I just wanted to clarify, Trustee Hernandez. My understanding is that the language in the bond is quite broad. That's why we use the language, "students and workers," what it says in the bond. What law are you talking about that you're claiming that it can't be used for rent relief?
So can I ask you to reach out to Trustee Hernandez and for two things? One, because you've made some demands that I think you need that in order for a real robust discussion with student needs and to really address the immediate need, that there are some specifics that I think you need to have a conversation with VP Hernandez on regarding those things, so that we're not just throwing all of those things in the wind, that whatever additional concerns that she has. So I'm going to ask you to save that for that conversation, only not to silence you, but because I think it's important for there to be a sufficient give and take in a conversation, and not just you coming to us, telling us a bunch of themes that need to be addressed by a specific group of people.
Respectfully, we did ask for good faith engagement, not gaslighting, not silencing. And Sarah made a claim, and I'm just asking for clarification on the law that she cited. Could you just repeat that law?
Well, since she cited it.
Opposition 39, and we can give you, we can give you a legal.
But if you could reach out to her directly, and I'm not saying Friday at the meeting, but.
Yeah, we've been to enough meetings, and you've had plenty of feedback, so it's time to take action.
If you can reach out to her, if you choose not to, it's your choice, but to get some clarification. Thank you, trustees. So administration, staff.
Quick, quick comment. I, I, I mean, I have to, unless you don't want me to. Okay. I just want to make sure that we revisit, because I, Nicole, Vice Chancellor, I didn't see the peer navigators in the presentation. Are they still around from the county? So peer navigators, are they still, I haven't seen them on the campuses. I, I haven't. So question for presidents, are they on the campuses right, right now? The peer navigators from the county.
My understanding, or putting the presentation together, is that they do have liaisons at each of the college Basic Needs Centers.
Okay. But we used, before the pandemic, we had, so I just want to make sure that we have presence, consistent presence from the county peer navigators that are there to connect them with emergency housing. This is separate from the LSA. I understand LSA, I understand the bigger county programs, but just emergency in particular vouchers. So that's one, if we could just rein in on the peer navigator folks. I think we've had discussions with the supervisors, the LA County Supervisor about that. And then I would also entertain kind of the possibility to have bond money be available for acquisition of property that also act as an emergency situation. And then furthermore, we are working on a resolution that's going to be presented in my committee on, in a couple of weeks, that will have some of this. The, the other portion that I think would be smart for us to look into is essentially having the five nonprofits that currently have space be able to provide, because of the regulations and the criteria that it takes to be able for them to stay there, and I know, you know, they have to be enrolled with us and so on and so forth. If we could please look into having just, for again, for emergency purposes, waivers of those criteria and then catch up with the criteria after, if possible. If we can talk to those nonprofits about the possibility of that. I know DePaul Center just emailed us saying they only have two TRITech students and that there's room right now for five more. So I don't want those beds empty, so I, and I don't want the excuse of like, we still need to get them through the process. I understand, we can get their transcripts later. Like, right now, we need to deal with just the fact that they need some emergency housing. So beyond all that, I do want to continue to craft this with Trustee Hernandez to be able to have some of these more concrete solutions. The clarification there is that bond money can't be given out in form of check, but that doesn't mean we can't buy properties that would then act as emergency housing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Vella. And I agree, I think we need to do a better job of working with our partners that we are paying a lot of money to, to try to provide immediate housing. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Thank you so much. So Madam Board Secretary, roll call, please.
Student Trustee Bam's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Eno?
Yes, sorry.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just to clarify, Prop 39 does not apply to this. And so this, you know, again, this pretending that students don't know what they're talking about is what you did at the last meeting, people saying that we didn't do our research. If you actually read our petition, we provide all the citations for our claims. We have done our research, we are scholars. And so it's disappointing to see this tactic used again, to try to act like we don't know what we're talking about. And outside of this funding, you have many different pools of funding that you could meet these demands with. We're just citing this one, and you can use it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shet.
Who can advise us on that?
Okay, so next up, we have item G. May I have a motion and a second on item G1?
So moved.
Moved by VP Eno.
Bayham's second.
Second by Bayham. Madam Board Secretary, roll call, please.
Student Trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes, but can we, did you put this on, Chancellor?
Yes, Mr. Toy is here to answer any questions that you might have on this.
Should we take the vote now and then ask questions, or what's the, I mean, I just would like a little presentation, that's why this is on.
My sense is we've begun the.
Thank you, students.
Can we stop the roll call, Madam General Counsel?
You may, if you so wish, to get information, or you may choose to finish the roll call, but Mr. Toy is prepared to provide a presentation as requested, but we'll just have to take roll call again.
That's fine. So we'll halt roll call.
Accept.
And have the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon, President Henderson, board members, and Chancellor Rodriguez. As I noted at the board meeting on March 6th, the board adopted then a resolution setting the elections for November 2024, and that that resolution was the beginning of the election process for LA County elections. And in furtherance of the election process, the LA County Registrar Recorder requests that the present resolution confirm the past practice regarding increasing the maximum length of candidate statements from 200 words to 400 words. And this resolution also confirms past practice of having the candidates pay for the cost of printing their candidate statements on sample ballots at the time the candidates file their election documents. for the cost of printing their candidate statements on sample ballots at the time the candidates file their election documents. And federal and state law govern actually whether registered voters in the county can request that their sample ballots be translated into particular languages. That's what this resolution does.
Colleagues, I'm sure there are some other questions?
No.
What? Okay, so I do have a question. So regarding, so that was regarding the candidate statement. Is, are you saying that when we file, we have to pay for the candidate statement if we want the candidate statement included at that time?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question. That, that's been the standard practice. The one thing that's being extended here is the additional 400 words.
Correct.
I, I raised the issue the last time, I think you were here in this meeting about, there's a number of abuses in the process, jumping around, because there's no, since we don't have, these seats are just numerically ordered. They're not by geography or context or anything like that. So we tend to see some very strange behavior from, you know, somebody filing one day, jumping around to the other day. There's no clear-cut intention. And one of the comments I made back then, and, and, and outside of just extending 400 words here, and if, and if the choice is not to do it for this election, because the time is nearing, but to, to really understand a filing process, much like is in place for other representative bodies, whether it's the state or whether it's county, local cities, they tend to have sort of an intentionality in how you file. I think some of them do, not a lot of them do, some of them are very bare forms. But at the same time, I think, you know, there's been a growing desire to include at least participation in some form of ethics training before filing. Going to the C of Los Angeles where you do not become an official candidate until you at least do the minimum ethics training standards. We don't have any ethics trains. And so I think from the, from the standpoint of consideration, I'd encourage us to, if, if we don't look at it now, that we look at it in the near future as something that's part of a candidate qualification to be there. I, you know, like I said, it's not, our, our neighbors in Los Angeles do it. They have a standard that's a, it's a little different, but, but, you know, there are a number of moving pieces at times that I think would be very helpful and clear to understand that when you enter these races, what your responsibilities are. In addition, there's also a number of laws that are currently in the works that have talked about everything from campaign contribution limits or campaign contribution issues forward. How does all things work for new candidates? It isn't necessarily impacted because they don't make decisions on the board, but for existing board members, those are all issues that are, that are on the books. But this is just for 400 words. But there is, in my mind, in my, clearly a need to, to deal with the entire process for us and particularly take lessons to include ethics as much as possible when people file.
I, I believe trustee Veras that, that those are concerns, but they're concerns at the state legislative level as opposed to in our particular resolution at this time.
So you're saying that we can add additional requirements or ethics when we file? Because we've changed, we changed this at the local level years back. The state is, state is sort of evolved the interest of, of our elections to us locally.
Yeah, correct, but I, I think I kind of explained this at, at the last resolution. We were prior to 1997, 1998, subject to the LA City Charter. So once, if the charter was amended to include community college district resolutions, then of course we would be subject to that. But as we moved away from the LA City Charter authority to the state charter authority, to the state statutory and constitutional authority, that's kind of a, a question at the, at the state level today as opposed to the LA City Charter provisions prior to 1995, say.
Okay, I, I, I think we need to take a look deeper into it because deciding whether we were going to do a primary general or not do them, I mean, that was a sort of authority given here locally. If, if there is the need to go back to the state, I would, I would request that we consider this during our next legislative cycle period or at the very least to get clarification to understand whether these are things that we can do or not. Failing to have some level of ethics education when you have candidate filing is, is, is a problem and it manifests frequently in this board, in this organization. So I would, I would encourage that we look at those kinds of things, even to the point of, of, of considering a piece of legislation to make sure it's clear that we can add very simple things like ethics education when you file. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, Madam Board Secretary.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Upstair.
Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Veras?
Thank you, colleagues. And now on to representative reports. Do we have any members of the resource table that wish to be recognized at this point?
Good afternoon, my name is Angela Chavere, and I currently serve as a president of the District Academic Senate. First of all, I want to congratulate our new student trustee, Amber. I can tell already that you're going to be a force to be reckoned with, so welcome. Glad to have, it's great to have you on the board. I also want to congratulate our newly tenured faculty. It's very exciting to reach that milestone, so I'm very happy that you've done so. And I also want to thank a, a number of individuals, including Maria Veloz, Mike Fong, Jeff Fernandez, for their work on the student tutor bill, AB 2931, which will help our students, our part-time students work as tutors. Happy Pride Month, everyone, and Juneteenth Emancipation Day. And I also, finally, I want to express my support for the students' demand for oversight of the housing projects. So I want to start my comments by quoting, first of all, Maya Angelou, who said that courage is the most important of all the virtues. Because without courage, you can't practice any other virtue consistently. Rosa Parks said that I have learned over the years that knowing what must be done does away with fear. Last month, the District Academic Senate voted 29 to 0 to approve a resolution of no confidence in the board and chancellor in preventing public corruption and taking effective actions to combat sexual harassment and discrimination. This was not an action that we took lightly or in haste. In fact, it was very difficult for us to, to reach this point. But after more than six months of deliberation, discussions at the local colleges, multiple resolutions, letters to the board, audit requests, and genuine attempts to implement meaningful reforms, we concluded that the only viable option was a vote of no confidence. Because it was abundantly clear that a majority of the board and the chancellor are unwilling or unable to do the right thing to protect students, employees, and the public funds that they are entrusted with. Little could I have imagined eight months ago when I stood before you to ask questions about a $10 million jury verdict in the sexual harassment lawsuit at Southwest College that was featured in the LA Times, that those questions would open up a whole Pandora's box of other issues. As we started asking questions, it became clear that this was not only about the district's lack of Title IX compliance or its inexplicable failure to protect students and employees from sexual harassment and retaliation. It was also about a massive failure and a lack of internal controls to prevent public corruption. As we began to delve into these issues, it became clear that the district's ability to monitor these things is completely broken. It appears that the only mechanism to get justice or relief is a successful lawsuit or an article in the LA Times. The district has not developed effective administrative procedures to deal with sexual harassment or unlawful discrimination and instead uses outdated regulations that rely on administrators to do the right thing. As we all know, in the Southwest case, that never happened. Since we sent out the press release about the vote of no confidence, numerous individuals have reached out and told us, told me the same story over and over again. Odiya and whistleblower complaints in the LACC D go nowhere. They seem to be handled through a catch-and-kill strategy. Whether we are talking about students, faculty, or staff, there is almost never enough evidence found to support their claims. Internal audit and whistleblower committee do not work the way they're supposed to. Why? Because in part, the whistleblower committee members are appointed by and report to the chancellor. And at the end of the day, they have no power and can only make recommendations. So this brings me to President Henderson's May 15th letter about misconduct by one of the trustees and the potential legal implications. First of all, I want to publicly thank and applaud President Hesit Harrison for her tremendous courage in writing this letter. Not only does her letter corroborate the DAS concerns, but it also raises alarming questions about what might be criminal activity that if found to be true, will likely cost the district millions of dollars related to pending litigation. President Henderson also talks about a legal apparatus that the board is not aware of and that has been created to not address issues of sexual harassment and to cover them up, discrimination, retaliation, and other problems. Last year alone, the district spent $7.2 million, $7.2 million in external legal fees. This year, the district has spent more than $4.5 million so far. That amount of money could fund more than 2,000 classes or provide relief to students. Unfortunately, much of this money was used not only to defend sexual harassment perpetrators, but some of it was used to launch investigations into employees and faculty leaders who have spoken out publicly against sexual harassment and corruption. The questions that many of us have include, who is authorizing and controlling these legal expenditures? Are there conflicts of interest on how that money is being spent? Are public funds being used improperly to defend people who may have committed crimes and/or are not district employees? Do these expenditures constitute an illegal gift of public funds? Have LACC D employees been subjected to unlawful retaliation through third-party investigations? And what does the role of human resources in these investigations and retaliatory tactics? Some have argued that sexual harassment, discrimination, and public corruption are not in the Senate purview. We strongly disagree. Title IX compliance is fundamental to student success and the equitable access to education. The misuse of public funds has a direct impact on the quality of educational programs and student services. The need for external oversight is critical. I'm very happy to see that the board is finally considering a review of its Title IX compliance and handling of sexual harassment cases by Cozen and O'Connor. However, after reading President Henderson's letter, many of us would argue that the next logical and unavoidable step is to call for a criminal investigation. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon. Congratulations, student trustee. Yeah, look forward to working with you. So I want to say that I had a whole speech written out, and then the students came up. And at that point, I just ditched that speech. As you know, I just won my second term as president for AFT 1521. And the first thing I want to say is I lost my voice during those first two terms, and I did a disservice to our Black, Brown, queer immigrant students by not using my voice. I was afraid of pissing off some faculty who might say that I was playing the race card because they were, their lack of introspection and ability to actually think about what I was saying. And that's not fair to those who don't have a voice at all. Is, once we get a voice, we're supposed to use it. And seeing those students come up here, it reminded me of many of the things I had put in my speech but needed to talk more about. I, I want to recognize that we just had the loss of Reverend James Lawson, a giant in the civil rights movement. All right. And I'll tell you, growing up in the 1970s, I always say those of us who are low-income and Black, we were not the children of Martin. We were the children of Malcolm. And some of the things that were said today was said by Malcolm X way back when. He said, equality, education, housing, healthcare are not a civil right, they're a human right. A right that should be extended to all, not just Americans, but people all over the world. I have a tattoo of Malcolm X on my left shoulder, along with the tattoo of an English professor, Phil Fuchs, who also spoke to the power of feminism and the power of the queer community. I wear my politics on my sleeve, and I'm no longer going to hide them. Because we are entering into a time when we're going to have to make difficult decisions. We're entering in a time when we may have to make some cuts. And those cuts are going to affect the most vulnerable amongst us. They're going to affect our students, they're going to affect our staff, and they're going to affect our adjuncts. And when you affect our students, you affect our communities. You affect the ability for our communities to grow. When these students came before you, they came out of desperation. A desperation that honestly no one in this room created. It's a desperation that's been created from the very beginning and the inception of this country. In the 1950s, when my professor from Cal State LA went to UCLA, he paid $12 a unit to go to UCLA, or not unit, excuse me, a year to go to UCLA. Because the education code said the college shall be free until you started letting in Black and Brown students. And then tuition started rising. Our students may pay more in community college tuition than I paid at Cal State LA. And the Cal States are going to rise by 30% in the next five years. This is a hard issue that our students are talking about, that we are not equipped to solve all of. But it is our duty to work with them on it. It is our duty to educate them so they can advocate for themselves. It is our duty to provide opportunity for them. But even in my own union, when we spend more time infighting because we're more worried about winning a point than our students, we do a disservice to our students. When this board and this district has infighting that keeps you from focusing on the prize, which is our students and our communities, it does a disservice to our students. We have to work together in the next coming years. And I'm going to also apologize to every other bargaining unit in this room. Because our faculty guild takes up way too much of the oxygen. And I'm being honest there. Because we're not the only one that makes this place run. Our administrators also make this place run. Our board, our chancellor, our vice chancellors make this place run. But have we forgotten who we're making it run for? Because we have to stop. We got to focus, and we got to move forward. And if we can't do that together, our community is going to pay the price. And I am not going to forget my working class, Black roots, again. Because that's what drove me in the classroom with my students, that was drove me to take this damn position in the first place. And it's what will drive me through the next two years. And if I don't. And if I don't get reelected, that's fine, but I will go home and face my wife and kids with pride, knowing I did the right thing for my community. And my community is black, my community is brown, my community is Asian, my community is white, and my community is working class and struggling. I still live in that community, I still love that community, and I will do everything I can to fight for that community. So get on board or get out the way, because I am not going to silence my voice again. Thank you.
Thank you, President McKee.
So, I think we have an authentic conversation today, huh, are we? I think the social worker in me came out just there, James. I think I'm going to stand and say the same thing. I think we all show up in not in our authentic selves' spaces because we have roles to play. And I think in that, we oftentimes lose first. Let me go back. My name is Andre Edwards. I am now the sworn in president of AFT fifteen twenty-one A. Thank you. Thank you, President Henderson. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, Chancellor Rodriguez. Thank you to everyone here and online. I knew it was going to be a popcorn and a tea session, but I'm happy that it's slowly all see the curve, come to authentic conversations. I want to start off, and I'm gonna follow my script, I almost got a little too passionate and almost went to church, James, thank you. But let me go back. So this month, I want to honor Juneteenth. As a descendant of Rosewood, I like to say a quote that that was not, and it was neither the beginning nor the end of something. I would like to say that when we do things, it's not retroactive, that we do them with intentionality, and that we rush to do things that honor cultural inclusivity and deep authentic conversations. I also want to stand and say thank you and honor our Pride Month, Stonewall nineteen sixty-nine, right? And also this month is PTSD Awareness Month and Men's Health Awareness. We have liberation and we have mental health all coupled in one month, which I think is awesome to speak to that. When it comes to mental health, we pass the Board Resolution of Wellness in twenty twenty-three. But implementation is a critical thing that I think often in the passion of doing something new to fight the facts like student housing, that, that fine line of how do we implement something takes time, and it's a process, and it's not a one-size-fit-all, it is a thing you come back to over and over again. Looking at mental health, I want to say when it comes to that, we have suicides, we have deaths, we have people that are having work-life issues, we all are stressed, and if we are talking about that or looking at how to reduce stigmas, we're missing the opportunity to actually have something succeed. So with that resolution of wellness, we really have to be open to making sure that it's working and that supporting the classified and supporting the faculty and staff that are having those programs run so we all can access those services. I like to leave with that, there's a great article, but I'm not going to go too long. But mental and physical emotional pain registers the same. We like to compartmentalize everything from our titles and our roles, that we forget that that's silos and nothing is getting done. And if it is, it's, it's small. I think when I say that, the brain doesn't see the body and the emotion any different. We all come here and sometimes get beat up, and I'd just be looking like, oh, they hold it together because I would have cracked. And I have to give some comedy to give levity. Liberation also saying that, the definition from the Botanica is the act or process of freeing someone or something from another's control. That is not always inherently a bad thing. We are all in a dance of control. We got one budget, correct? All of our issues feel important, correct? All of us want to say, and I stand with our students, the now, 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 now. But that one pot, as Ms. Gordon would say, is not a unlimited pot. So as we bring these issues and our fights to you guys, we also do that recognizing that you have to make those hard decisions. Okay, so I, I honor that. Standing here representing Classified fifteen twenty-one A, it's a hard thing to stand up. I often like to say I do things not with pride, but moral integrity, meaning that I will not get my hands dirty, but I will fight and get bruises for what is right. And that oftentimes makes you an enemy. When it talks about inward fighting, that is a real life issue, and it's great to see that it's just not us, because everybody knew our drama. But I like to say that at the end of that rebirth is a beautiful thing, and I'm okay with doing the work. The rapport and relationship is necessary. We are in a sandbox, and we have to realize that everybody can't have the shovel. Sometimes somebody else needs the priority to dig a hole, and we can have the pill. So I stand with you in that. I, I would like to speak to really quickly, quickly, May tenth, when the governor released that letter, that was also my birthday, but I was scared, y'all. I had classified calling, well, what does this mean for us? And I said, well, let's look at the vision of what LACC D is, and let's go back to the principle that our students are what we are here to all serve. And I read this every so often, that the LACC D will strive to become a national leader in student success by providing quality, high-quality, accessible educational opportunities across this district, and it goes on, please read it. I read the mission and vision every day. When I say classified or educators too, when I say local ninety-nine are educators in the way they keep our, our campuses clean, our faculty, I don't look at us as a hierarchy. And I think that's the problem, we're reciprocal. When we look at things systemically, we have to look at that no one wins when we're all are fighting, and everyone suffers. I, I say that to say that as we're looking at what this means for our campus, please keep in mind that when we're making these tough decisions on the local level at your college campuses, that people have to feed their children, we have to go home, and we have to be okay. When you're making decisions not to hire or place or backfield, that that does come with the influx of what reclassifications or TWCs working out of class, that it comes with a cost. So when we make decisions, it is really good to have us all at the table so that we're making the best fiduciary decisions with the most realistic and sustainable decisions. So we're all treated equitably, so we can serve the greater vision. Lastly, I would just close with, I thank you for the opportunity to have this, and thank you for the authentic conversation. Because at the end of the day, if I'm back or not, I am going to stand in my authentic truth, I hope to do what's right, and I hope to have the support to have and collaborative relationships with you to do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am so happy that I didn't have to go after President McKee. Thank you, President Edwards, for that right there. My name is Bruce Hicks, I'm the SEIU seven twenty-one president, and I want to say good afternoon to the chancellor, the president, Madam Henderson, President Henderson, and all the board members today, and so happy to have you here. I want to say your name right, it's Behan?
Behan.
Behan, Behan. When you spoke, you spoke so eloquently, I can hear your passion and what you went through and how it equates to what's going on with our students. I think the students are the reason why we're here. I don't think I know, I know that, the students are the number one reason we're here, so I want to welcome you and say thank you for being a part of this board and doing all you do. And your grandmother, oh my God, that was a, a great moment for me. I was getting text messages, and I, I just want to say thank you and welcome aboard. So, uh, I want to talk about today, the fallacy of leadership. One of the things that leaders don't actually understand what is needed sometimes, it's an error in their thinking, and particularly what I'm talking about is professional development. If you don't believe that your employees, your leaders here in the district need professional development, then that's an error in your reasoning. One of the things that I've noticed being part of this district is classified employees don't get much professional development. It's a problem here, it's been a problem, I've worked with other districts, Santa Monica comes to mind. And I've been on some of their interview panels, and one of the things that I noticed is the, the interactions, the, the conversations, the answers to a lot of these questions in the interview are very robust. And so I investigated, why? Well, Santa Monica has a pretty robust professional development for their classified employees, and that's why, one of the reasons, I guess, when I was a part of some of those interviews, I noticed that the responses were just awesome. I don't understand a district this large, why we don't have professional development coordinator, why we don't have one or two of those positions to address the needs of our employees. It's something that really bothers me. So at SEIU, we decided to do something about it a couple of years back in twenty twenty, we created some language in negotiation where we can get monies to help fund professional development. Actually, a thousand dollars per campus is what we asked for and what we received. So over the years, SEIU have been pooling those resources to offer professional development training for our members. This, so we have an event coming up, June twenty-first, I spoke on that last time. This will be our fourth professional development, one, two, three, four professional development event that we're having. I want to get into that a little bit more, but I want to thank a couple of people who were very instrumental, and I'm sorry, SEIU members that are here and at home, I'm sorry I didn't say hello to you, but hello to you. So a lot of people were instrumental in helping us get this across. After we got out of negotiation, we were hard pressed to spend some monies that we had built up. So I want to thank the Director of Business Services, Valencia Moffett, and her team, especially Jason Casico, I hope I'm saying his name right. Jason is a proud SEIU seven twenty-one member, and he was very helpful in helping bring in this professional development to the forefront, to, and then also the CFO, Jeanette Gordon. We got into a bind at the last minute trying to secure the locations and that team and see, and the CFO, they really came through and helped our members. So at our meeting, and let me just go to my phone so I could kind of give you some information, just kind of pivoting back, I really would like the board to consider what we can do to enhance professional development for classified staff. I mean, it, it shouldn't be our issue, our cross the bear as leadership in the unions to provide professional development, I think it's a, a good thing, it's something that we're doing. So we are having our event June twenty-first at the Pinstripes Corporate Center. It's out in Willen Hills, and it's from eight AM to four PM. So let me talk about some of the topics that we're going to talk about, performance management. Why are we talking about performance management? That's one of the elements of a supervisor's job, manage the performance of the people they have underneath them and help uplift them so not only they can do a better job, but they understand their job. This is something that is really often not understood, but it's an integral part of what supervisors do. I often get asked by our members, what, how am I helping student success? And I'm bringing that up because we've talked about student success. I'm the general foreman or the custodial supervisor, or maybe I'm the senior analyst, or maybe I'm the bookstore manager. What am I doing to help and aid student success? Well, I have that answer for you. What you're doing is you are doing your job, and you're doing your job well. You're making sure the lights are on if you're a general foreman, or if you're working in the admin analyst, you're making sure employees are paid, or if you're a CFA, you're making sure that the bills are paid, things of that nature. We want to bring our people back so, into a, a really relaxed environment and do some training, team building, eating, laughing, and, and, and being collegial with our colleagues, and also develop their professional development skills. Why is that important? Because it, professional development, training, I, I've noticed in the faculty area, we do a very good job of that. The faculties receive a lot, and there's no slight to the fact that I think it's great. I think the classified staff deserve that same. Look, it creates organizational commitment between employee and the organization when people understand their jobs. We're also, uh, understand their jobs a little bit, but we're also going to be talking about permissive and non-permissive leaves, everything from FMLA. As supervisors, we get impacted with a lot of different issues. And I'm gonna tell you, most supervisors, when they come into these positions, they're not prepared to, to, to deal with these issues. They know their job. If I'm a accountant or a bookkeeper, I know that, but what about all these different things that I have to deal with? Where's the training at? We're providing it, but I'm gonna go back to what I said, we love for the district to, to get involved in this. Let's get this, some professional coordinator position to help our people, all our classified staff, not leaving them a lot behind. A lot of people want to promote and see other different avenues, and they need these, these type of trainers to help them. Another thing we're doing is a personnel commission, where we invited the personnel commissioner to talk about a few items. Why? Because people have a lot of questions about why they didn't pass a test or why they wasn't involved on interviews. So this is important to our members. And then one of the biggest things that we deal with, and I've seen it today, and we're going to see more of it probably later on, is conflict. Organizations of this size are, there's conflict everywhere. We need conflict resolution training, so we're bringing that to our members. And then lastly, grievance, writings and defense, this is something that SEIU is going to help our members with, because, like I said, another thing coming into these positions, maybe not familiar with these things and how these things work and how you can be helpful in resolving these issues, conflict and grievances and things like that. So this is very important to us. We have negotiated this language for a reason, because we want to develop our membership, and we would like the district to be hand in hand with us to help develop the classified staff. That's what we would like. And then lastly, I just want to remind all the SEIU seven twenty-one members, if you haven't yet RSVP, please RSVP, it's going to be a hundred percent release time available for you. So come, kick back, learn some things that's going to help you at your workplace and, and in a very relaxed environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Henderson, members of the board, Chancellor Rodriguez, and a special welcome, student trustee Behan. Behan. Is that good? Thank you so much. Really, really happy to see you here, and oh my gosh, what a thrill to hear you, Grandma.
She's great.
She's really great. For the record, I, I am Dr. Deborah Harrington, I am president of the Teamsters, and I represent our district deans. And I do want to begin by congratulating those faculty members who are advancing and who have achieved tenure and are being recognized today. I, I do want to say that they are the heartbeat of our colleges, they're on the day-to-day front lines of student success, and, and I applaud their dedication, their professionalism, and their passion. Cheers to you all. Happy Juneteenth. But naturally, I, I want to reserve my, my greatest wishes and joy for my beloved community to say happy pride. This is personally a very bittersweet season for me, however, as someone who has lived long enough to witness the struggles and triumphs of LGBTQ plus peoples in this state and country, and from, from Stonewall to the defeat of the Briggs Initiative, for those of you who go back that far, to Proposition Eight, to marriage equality, to the destructive and, and hateful laws being propagated against our trans family, I am so proud of, of our resiliency, the strength and brilliance and joy and social and cultural and historic wealth that we bring, and we've always brought to this world. I thank the board for its resolution today in honor of pride, and to my fellow community members, we, we've heard a lot of quotes from a lot of great people, but I am going to give you the words of the immortal Lady Gaga. Do not allow people to dim your shine because they are blinded. Tell them to put on some, some, some sunglasses because we were born this way. But I, I am here primarily to represent our members and to bring up just an issue that's been pressing and, and they're very concerned about. As you may recall, our newest contract was ratified way back in early October. Nonetheless, its key elements in terms of addressing the central issue brought forth in our negotiations, that of mitigating workload overload and being fairly compensated for what deans are constantly told are temporary additional duties that sometimes turn into months and years-long affairs, these things remain frustratingly unresolved. We have several unit members who have had their stipends for additional duties approved by their managers and have still not been paid, as payroll has apparently still not created a code. and have still not been paid as payroll, uh, has apparently still not created a code so that our VPs can, uh, add these duties to their assignments. Additionally, our contract entitles our members to fair treatment across the colleges. Yet some, uh, uh, members have been approved for the exact same additional duties at one campus and have been denied at another campus. So, uh, literally the entire academic year and the majority of the fiscal one have gone by without these issues being addressed in a timely manner. Our members deserve better and, uh, these are human resources and operational issues that, that should be prioritized and resolved. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor. My name is Chrissana Ozan. I represent SEI Local ninety nine. Um, I first want to congratulate our new stu- student trustee. Congratulations and, uh, we look forward to working with you. I come, uh, before you today with several, several critical concerns that demand your attention as trustees of this district. First, I must address the troubling patterns occurring in the district HR investigation process. There are recurrent issues of bias and unfairness and most importantly retaliatory patterns involving Local ninety nine members as they file or speak on work environment complaints. When Local ninety nine members file these complaints, they are targeted with intimidation and are terminated by employer and employee labor relations staff. During a prior meeting, the ELR personnel bragged about how many employees, uh, she helped to get, uh, fired by this board. Today, two Local ninety nine members are being targeted for term- termination after filing and speaking on work environment complaints at West LA College. And two other members, a husband and wife, both district employees have been targeted for investigation following their filing of a sheriff report and speaking on work environment complaints at West, at Valley College. After one of our Local, uh, ninety nine members at Valley College reported harassment at her work site, she immediately found herself under investigation based on allegations from MNO members involved in, in an incident where her car was damaged and tampered within such a way that it would have resulted in an accident on the freeway when picking up her children after work. When she and her husband filed a report with the camp- campus sheriff, she was retaliated against by HR through an, as investigation of both her and her husband. The member requested a copy of the incident report regarding her vehicle being damaged to the president, VP and sheriff deputy. The reason for the request is because she received a letter from the ELR specialist that she was being investigated after she made a report about her vehicle being, uh, damaged. When the incident report was requested by our member, the ELR specialist intervened by instructing the president not to reply to a requ- request for an incident report. Additionally, during, um, ELR's investigation, both members and both member and her husband was threatened by ELR specialists by telling them not to discuss the investigation which, with each other because it was illegal. It was later, it was later determined that the timeline of the allegations filed against the husband and wife were suspiciously changed in the statement of charges following ELR's, uh, questioning. So I bring this up to say that, that, um, employee and employer, uh, labor relation investigate investigative process severely lacks the impressionality needed for fair and equitable treatment for all parties in a dispute. It has repeatedly proven to be biased towards management and intended on terminating anyone who complains against corrupt practices in this district. And to ratify this, I strongly advocate for the involvement of a neutral third party in all district investigations, ensuring fairness and equity, uh, for all parties involved. Furthermore, Local ninety nine has a serious concern with how HR and management often intervene with investigations when sheriff reports are filed by employees. On one occasion, uh, SEIU, um, seven twenty, uh, twenty one supervisor, uh, blocked a Local ninety nine member a report to the sheriff about threatening behaviors, uh, from his supervisor at West LA Cal- uh, College. The manager told the sheriff to disregard following the report and noted that he would take care of the matter. This not only violates our member rights to file reports, but served to block the sheriff's investigation into the matter. Specifically, according to the California Workplace Violence Law, employees in our state have a right to a safe work environment that is free from violence, threats and intimidation and protection from retaliation in the event that they report incidents of workplace violence, threats, intimidation or participate in investigations. Secondly, I must address the district scully, um, hearing process, which appears to be biased. District HR specifically, specifically ELR coaches, the college, uh, presidents on how to rule on Local ninety nine cases be- before hearing all facts during the scully hearing. This has occurred in three cases where I have witnessed myself. Um, in one particular case, I witnessed when, um, asked if a video of an incident could be shown to support the employee case and the college president denied the offer. Also, when vital information is submitted to support the employees, it's often not taken into consideration. Um, the ELR scully hearing process, you know, is a waste of time and is unfairly administered. Again, Local ninety nine strongly advocate for the board of trustees to mandate involvement and a neutral third party uh, in the scully process, ensuring fairness and equity for all parties involved. Lastly, a Local ninety nine once again brings to the board's attention the, the use of a biometric system for timekeeping at LA Harbor College. Despite our complaints three years ago or more, this system is still being used at the college. While collecting and capturing our Local ninety nine members' biometric information, there has not been information given to our members in writing of the biometric information being collected, stored or used and the specific purpose and length of time for which the biometric information is being collected, stored or used and a written release signed off by Local ninety nine members as at Harbor College regarding the biometric information being captured and stored. Trustees, please be aware that a written release is also required before disclosure of a biometric, um, information is released. Finally, I request that today's board, uh, minutes clearly, clearly reflect uh, that no other campuses are using the biometric, biometric system for timekeeping of Local ninety nine members. MNO managers and supervisors at Harbor Harbor College are not required to use, uh, the biometric system and no other employees within the entire Los Angeles Community College District are being, are required to clock in and out using their biometrics. Local ninety nine demands that the biometric timekeeping system be dis- discontinued in our district immediately. We strongly urge the board of trustees to establish policies banning such system, um, going forward. Thank you. And I also want to say happy, uh, Juneteenth and happy Father's Day to all the fathers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Yes. Good, good afternoon, board members, Chancellor Rodriguez, students, members of the public. Uh, Student Trustee Behan, uh, welcome and we look forward to your advocacy. Uh, my name is Manny Ranhel. I'm the chief negotiator for SEIU Local ninety nine, um, here to report on our negotiations. First, our negotiations need to be settled as soon as possible. We represent the lowest-paid workers in LACC D and they need their money now. The last time we met with, uh, the district to negotiate our contract was May thirtieth. Our next negotiation session is not taking place until June twenty seventh. Because of the district said that they were not available sooner. Because of this delay, we felt the need to send our proposal by email. We remain available, but the district needs to make themselves available too, so that we can work towards an agreement as soon as possible. Second, we are demanding equity, but your negotiation team is rejecting our demand. For example, we want our essential workers to have the same career increments or longevity as the rest of the workers in LACC D. The years of service for essential workers should not be worthless. The district rejected our proposal saying that the, uh, that the LACC D board does not want to authorize additional funds to do that. If this is true, then what the board is communicating to us is that the board does not care about equity for our essential workers. We demand equity. We demand to end negotiation delays. Board members, if you're an ally of underserved workers, the time to advocate for, from your positions of power is now. You need to put an end to LACC D systemic oppression. Our members are ready to rise up and fight if that's what it takes for you to do the right thing. We look forward to the district's response to our proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak today. My name is Joseph Ayala and I represent Local ninety nine members as a steward for Harbor College, winner of the Culinary Cup. I'm also here in behalf of the dedicated employees of the Los Angeles Community College District, which represents custodians, our grounds, our maintenance assistants and many more employees who make a difference every day. As I come before you, we currently find ourselves at a critical juncture concerning the cost of living adjustment funds that are owed to our hard-working staff. These funds have not been released, causing undue hardship and financial strain on our employees. The cost of living continues to rise and our employees are feeling the impact. They sh- they have shown unwavering commitment to their roles and to the students they serve. And it's only fair that they receive the compensation they have been promised to them. The delay in distributing, dispersing the COLA funds is not just a financial issue. It's a matter of fairness, respect and integrity. We are here today to urge the board to take immediate action. Specifically, we request that the board authorize the district to send a clear, unequivocal message to the district negotiation team. Please sign the MOU, the Motto of Understanding, today and release those funds, those COLA funds to our members without any further delay. The ball is in your hands. And by signing that MOU and releasing these funds, the district will not only honor its commitment, but also demonstrate its respect and appreciation for the employees who are the backbone for the community college system. These funds are not a luxury. They are a necessity for our employees to continue to live and work with dignity. In closing, I'm asking you to consider the impact of continued delay on our lives and our employees. Let us move forward with urgency and resolve to ensure that employees receive the COLA funds they deserve. Together, we can uphold the principle and the fairness and the respect that LACC D stands for. And I thank you for your patience and your time and I trust you will take, act swiftly in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the board. How you doing? Um, how are you, Mr. Chancellor? I thank you for the opportunity, uh, that you guys are giving me to talk today. Um, just, I want to piggyback on my, uh, brother Joseph. Um, we really, uh, we feel that we are running, that the time is of the essence right now because, uh, I believe we've been negotiating all, close to a year. Uh, I think it's a little, uh, close to a year that we've been negotiating and, um, nothing, nothing, we have nothing yet. Um, I just want to ask you guys, uh, please revise or, or contract, sign it. And, um, you'll be helping, uh, thousands of families, you know, and, uh, uh, I believe, uh, gardeners, custodians, um, uh, groundkeepers and, uh, most of, of, uh, Local ninety nine members will, uh, thank you forever, guys. And, um, just, uh, uh, please help us, help us out, uh, sign our contract. And, uh, just, all we want is, um, equality with the others, uh, uh, with the other union and the LACC D. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to talk to you guys. My name is Elmer Lopez and I work at.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll move on to item I, reports from the board. Um, VP Eno, please summarize the proceedings of the Legend Public Affairs Committee that you chaired on, um, May fifteenth.
Sure. Um, I'll keep it brief. Today, um, as mentioned by Senate President, we were able to pass through consent item AB two nine three one, which is a student tutor bill, as well as AB thirty one forty two, the climate bill, um, is out and it passed unanimously seven to zero. Um, yeah, so great news. Um, aside from that, you know, everything's ongoing. We, um, our, our political director, Maria Velos, could not be here today because she's actually in Sacramento advocating for the great work that we do at LACC D. Um, things are ongoing. Oh, we did get the LA College Metro pass, which was great. Um, we're working on a lot of other things, but I will keep it brief to, for, keep it brief and just say that for now. But, um, please attend our upcoming meetings. Things are constantly moving and changing and shaking. And we look forward to hopefully good, good news in the near future.
Thank you, VP Eno. Next up, uh, Trustee Hoffman, please summarize the proceedings of the Budget and Finance Committee meeting that you chaired on May fifteenth.
Um, thank you, President Henderson. Uh, the committee received a presentation on the proposed tentative budget as well as receiving the tentative budget document. Um, the Budget and Finance Committee recommended approval of the tentative budget to the full board, which I believe is on the agenda today. The final budget will be presented to, um, the Budget and Finance Committee in August and the final budget will come to the full board for approval in September. In addition to the standing enrollment update, the committee received an informative presentation on the May revise by, uh, our lobbyist, Mark McDonald. And the committee also received the third quarter three eleven Q report, which is included in today's board agenda as an informative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up, uh, Trustee Vella. If you please summarize the proceedings of the Facilities Master Planning and Oversight Committee that you chaired on May fifteenth.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, uh, Madam President. So we went ahead and had a recommendation item, which was the LA Southwest College Student Union College, um, requested change. Um, so far it's going really well. We just had, um, a couple of, um, items we wanted to up, update on the building. Um, we also went ahead and had a project labor agreement and local worker hire program. Um, out of that, um, myself and members of the committee did ask for a report, um, regarding local worker hire. Um, and the main goal to try to increase the number of, uh, students to work on, in the program. So there, there's, uh, staff is working on kind of an analysis on that. Uh, we looked at construction market trends and outlook and then, uh, our active construction project status and active design project status reports. Uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next up, uh, Trustee Verra, if you could please some, summarize the proceedings of the Board Athletics Ad Hoc Committee that you chaired on May thirteenth.
The Athletics Committee, uh, reviewed, um, or continued this discussion on the needs of LACC D student athletes uh, and went over, um, components, um, uh, that would constitute, um, a survey of, of, of student athletes. And so, um, Vice Chancellor Alba Lopez and, uh, more Perlman provided some, um, some general draft material that the committee commented on and worked with and, uh, um, got feedback and have expectations to, um, um, distribute to our students in the, in the upcoming months. Uh, additionally, there was a generation of, or a discussion about revenue generation opportunities, sponsorship of, uh, athletics and venues and, uh, the student athlete, uh, name, image, likeness, uh, rules that, um, have been coming into play for the last several years. And so that discussion will be ongoing and continuing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, finally, I will summarize the proceedings of the Institutional Effectiveness and Student Success Committee that I chaired on May fifteenth. So, um, we received a revision of the LA Valley College Mission Statement, um, which was approved by the Committee for Board Consideration on today's agenda. And we received two presentations regarding athletics. The first was an overview of LACC D athletics programs with trends and enrollment by student as, um, student ethnicity, age, gender, sport and, um, completion, degree and transfer data. And it was nice to see that our athletic programs are not only picking up steam in terms of recruitment efforts, but in terms of student success outcomes across the districts. And we received a presentation from the LA Harbor College Athletics Program, where we were introduced to a few scholar athletes that highlighted the value of centering academic support. in math and English to assure overall academic success for struggling students. The committee was impressed to learn that student athletes overall have a higher academic success rate than non-athletes, and it was wonderful meeting the students that have done a stellar job at representing their college and the district and everyone on site who was treated to delicious cookies. So again, kudos to President Durado and LA Harbor College, and no pressure, but we do enjoy learning about the exceptional programs and activities at the colleges that represent the data on student success and opportunities to meet the students. So, and also, President Culpepper, I want you and Coach Miller to be prepared to visit us at IESS at some point in the near future. And that ends my report. So now on to item I two, Board Travel Ratification and Authorizations. May I have a motion and a second on I two?
So moved.
So moved by VP Ino.
Bayham, second.
And second by Bayham. Madam Board Secretary, roll call, please.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Stay.
Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Thank you, colleagues. And now on for item J, Resolutions. So, item J one is the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, pansexual, two-spirit, androgynous, and asexual plus, which is LGBTQIP, two S A A plus Pride Month. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion made by Vella?
Second. All right.
And second by Hoffman. Madam Board Secretary, roll call, please.
Student trustee?
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I should have jumped in earlier. I just wanted to do a quick discussion. I just, there's been a lot of social media activity from really truly, you know, sectors of the American community that are questioning the Pride, you know, month and aspect of it. And, you know, I just wanted to make a statement regarding that, and, you know, I think for this board, it, you know, I want to thank everyone on the board and our faculty, our staff, our students, our administrators for flying flags at each college, for having the ability to move forward and create these programs for our state legislators that were able to, you know, fund our pride centers. And I have to tell you that very simply, why we're doing this resolution and why we honor pride is because we are still, to this day, Victory Fund just reported over one hundred pieces of legislation being introduced within our fifty states to remove rights from LGBTQI individuals at their workplace, currently fighting to be able to be represented in certain positions in government, businesses rejecting us the minute we come into the actual business, the place of business. And the list goes on and on, but that's the reason. I believe that if you really want to combat the comments of why there's pride, then stop legislating against this community, you know? That's the answer. The minute you stop, we might not stop parade, though. That's the only one that we might not stop. It's just a very simple thing, it's literally that. And, you know, I really want to thank, I know Dean Harrington, your role is also to support the teachers, but your role is also that you are the lead in the LGBTQI Affairs Committee. Senator Henderson, thank you so much for advocacy. Thank you to Dr. Regina Smith, thank you, Dr. Nicole Velopas, all the pride activities we've done, and thanks to our queer students and all of the, really hundreds of people that participated in pride this month. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I want to say I had a wonderful time celebrating at the, we held pride with our students that came out, and I want to give Nat Guerrero at Valley a shout out, because it was a great time, and I think the students had a really great time, and they're already planning for whatever festivities we plan for next year. So we have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry. So there was money to fund the pride, but not money for housing?
I'll allow staff to answer that, I really don't. Yeah, thank you.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he said, he mentions, I'm sorry, I haven't gotten everybody's names yet, but you, trustee Vella mentioned, there was funds that were allocated for the pride department, but there are not funds actually implemented, or there's funds there, but there's no implementation or no actual push for the housing. I just have questions about that.
Actually, both things are occurring. We do invest resources into activities associated with supporting our LGBTQI students, including the activity that Mr. Vella is speaking of, so that is included. And, but that's not in place of, or does not supplant our interest or urgency around providing support for students in housing. We are making significant investments in housing at the moment to house students, LACC D students, through the providers that we have now.
Understood, I didn't think he said that activity, I thought even it was an actual hub that was funded.
Oh, if I understood correctly, this district advocated for the state legislature to provide ten million dollars over, for the next now three years, so a total of thirty million dollars, that will be distributed to the California community colleges, monies that could be used for?
Like an endowment, right?
No, it's a one-time allocation to the California State Community Colleges. Districts apply for and receive monies, we did as well, and those dollars can be used for a variety of support services for LGBTQ students, including in some campuses, they establish pride centers for locations and services.
Is there a line item for like a BSAC? I know with the high schools or LA USC, they have a BSAC. Is there a line item for like black student unions or like a funding for that as well? Or is this just a separate?
Is, let me understand the question, is there a line item for black students? Well, there's a line item for student activities, there's a line item in this district for our MOJA programs that serve black students, there's a line item for our African-American Outreach Initiative that is a district-wide program. So there are line items specifically associated with particular student groups, undocumented students, Fuentes students, Mesa students. So there are line items associated with particular activities.
I, well, yeah, everybody has, you know, been very vocal about their invested interest. My invested interest is obviously black students, so I just wanted to say that, yeah.
Thank you for your question.
I guess to speak on the resolution as well, I would like to give much thanks to trustee Vella in our endeavors for the district, as well as the state, and all of the resources that we have had. As the chancellor mentioned, the ten million ongoing, which is a total of thirty million funds. You know, it allows us to establish resources, spaces, and visibility for students to feel like they have a place and a home. And I think in this last year, as we advocated for the ten million, we also fought and advocated to ensure that we would get above and beyond the ten percent that we would have regularly been given based off of the bill. So we were given five hundred thousand, and so I just want to extend my great, deep appreciation to trustee Vella on that. That's all.
Thank you, and I'd like to just briefly respond to student trustee Bayham regarding allocations for black students. So, over the past four years since I've been on the board, we have more than doubled our allocation for AAOI, which is our African-American Outreach, and spent money for black students through MOJA. However, those items, AAOI is not a line item on the budget. It's funded, but it's not a line item, so the chancellor and I are working on making that happen. Okay, so next up, we have item J two, the celebration of Juneteenth.
There was need for roll call on the last item?
My bad, my bad. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for item J one. Can we have roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham advisory vote? Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Not here. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Thank you. Now, on the item J two, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Ino. Second by Henderson. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Absent. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Thank you, colleagues. Now on to item K, report from the chancellor. I'll turn the mic over to Chancellor Rodriguez for his report.
Yes, thank you, Board President Henderson, members of the board. Couple of things to report today. One is, I wanted to always point your attention to the chancellor's monthly report that was distributed today to all LACC D employees. I commend that resource to you to read about all the activities and awards, celebrations, and the, and the work of the respective colleges and districts. So that's a monthly report, it is publicly available, and we commend your reading to that, to that document. And again, thanks to all the colleges to contribute to that report. And moving on, here's what I'll discuss today. First, a happy Pride Month. We appreciate the board's passage of both resolutions on Juneteenth and indeed Pride, and of course, we embrace, celebrate, and uplift the experiences and contributions of our members of our LGBTQ plus community as well, as well as our African-American community. Next slide, this is what I'll discuss quickly today. We did have a faculty tenure reception earlier, a couple of photos around commencement, quick enrollment update, and then we'll spend the bulk of the presentation on the LASD contract, and I'll give that a proper introduction. So moving forth to the next, we want to recognize our eighteen individuals from the seven colleges who achieved tenure. Today, we recommend that to the board. Congratulations. It's a rigorous four-year process, and thanks to all those who are part of the tenure review committees, to the administrators, and to all those who served in mentoring roles for us. We welcome each of these individuals into our academic community and wish them long, prosperous contributions to the academic profession. So welcome aboard, and congratulations to our tenured faculty today. Moving forward to the next slide, let's not lose sight of the North Star. These are photos from the commencements and from the nursing pinning ceremonies and from the other celebrations that took place over the last month, mostly last week, where eight of the nine colleges were commenced, if you will, their exercises on Tuesday, and then Pierce College on Thursday. So this photo just reminds us of what it is that we're actually working towards and working for. I think that theme of student success was earlier resonated through many of the presentations. Looking at the next slide, this provides you another notion of wonderful ways in which our students succeed and in the way that we celebrate. So congratulations to the faculty, professional classified staff, to our administrators, to our board of trustees, all those who provide the conditions indeed for student success. Again, we must not lose sight of what the goal is here. Moving forward to the next slide, the enrollment report, I'll just say this, we all received this. This is the summer report from day one, which was reported yesterday. It looks like we're up about fourteen percent in head counts, and a little bit more than that, about nineteen percent with respect to the, to students. So we will indeed thank, again, all the hard work, all the folks in A and R, all the folks in IT, and the colleges and district staff who are working to eliminate the bots that have invaded our institutions so that we can have a true enrollment count, one and two open up spaces for students who need these classes. So again, we're off to a very, very strong start to our summer enrollment. So now let me turn to the last slide, and that is the update on the sheriff's contract. At the last meeting, the board asked, as we were considering the sheriff's contract, to report on a couple of things, and that is, first, to talk about the contract itself, and later on in the agenda under item AA twelve, the board will look, consider the contract we have with the LASD, which is for five years and ends in twenty twenty seven. We were asked way back when that it return on an annual basis to look at the contract, so we will do that, and I'll ask the Campus Safety and Security Director of the district, Mr. Leonard McCray, to walk us through that. And then to also, we discussed, the board was interested in learning more about the programs associated with the student, with the cadets, the cadet program. So both Captain Israel Renteria will talk a little bit about the cadet program, as well as Mr. McCray. And then lastly, there was an interest on the board when we indeed approved the contract back in twenty twenty two. It's what we were doing in the areas of community policing, de-escalation, training for, and around the areas of DEI and whatnot. So Captain Renteria is really to report on that. So let me ask Captain Renteria to start the presentation, followed by Mr. McCray. So we'll move through this swiftly, but again, the items that we will cover are the community policing, elements of the contract, and then the cadet program. So we'll have both Captain Renteria and Mr. McCray cover those three areas for the board as requested. Captain, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, President Henderson, Vice President Lino, Vice President Hernandez, our respective board members, and Chancellor Rodriguez. So I will start my presentation by talking on the cadet student worker program. Currently, we have twelve student workers assigned to the nine college campuses with four vacancies and two pending being hired. The hiring and retention of these student workers has been challenging with a high turnover rate. Some of the challenges are student workers not wanting to work for the sheriff's department, student workers not passing the background process of the sheriff's department, some student workers on the active list not responding to calls and or emails for interviews, and a high graduation rate of the student workers. With the assistance of the campus's recruitment efforts, I believe that we can recruit student workers from within the LACC D to provide on-the-job training and experience while encouraging participants to obtain their educational degree or professional certification. Now I will talk about community-oriented policing. What is community-oriented policing? Community-oriented policing is a strategy of policing that focuses on developing relationships with community members. It is a philosophy of full-service policing that is highly personal, where an officer patrols the same area for an extended period of time and develops a partnership with the citizens to identify and solve problems. Currently, the deputies and security officers you see every day are there to serve you and are unique to the rest of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. These deputies and security officers belong to the Community College Bureau and only patrol your college campuses. Their mission is to protect your students, faculty, staff, and construction workers while providing a safe environment for students to learn. As a result, all college bureau staff are required to attend training in all of the following areas: implicit bias and cultural competency, cultural diversity, de-escalation techniques and sexual harassment, policy of equality and domestic violence training. Now, one of the greatest challenges today is preventing and preparing for a major incident. Community College Bureau recognizes its responsibility to prepare for and deal with a tragic incident and is continuously collaborating to prevent them from occurring. As a result, my Training and Support Unit, which is comprised of one sergeant, one team leader, and a security officer, work with the LACC D Safety and Security Team and provide training and emergency response preparation across all nine college campuses. Both collaborate and provide onsite training to students, faculty, and staff on workplace violence, active shooter, emergency management, critical incident strategic planning, and de-escalation techniques. The most popular training that was conducted in twenty twenty three was active shooter training. This training was conducted multiple times at every campus and had over five hundred and seventy-five participants. During this training, participants learned what to do in the rare case of an active shooter incident, practiced barricading classroom doors, and were exposed to the duties of the LASD response teams. Additionally, a full-scale active shooter training event was conducted at Harbor College with multiple agencies participating and working together. My Bureau also recognizes the mental health concerns which have impacted operations at the college campuses. My bureau also recognizes the mental health concerns which have impacted operations at the college campuses. Since twenty twenty, a significant increase in requests for mental evaluation teams has occurred. Currently, we only have one mental evaluation deputy to serve online college campuses. In twenty twenty-three, with the assistance of the behavioral intervention teams, our mental evaluation deputy handled over a hundred referrals of students and staff whose behavior was a concern. The mental evaluation deputy also trained hundreds of LACC and LASD employees in mental health awareness, de-escalation strategies, and mechanisms for dealing with students of concern. The goal of this training is early intervention and prevention in order to prove, or in order to provide access to treatment and ongoing case management and monitoring. This collaborative effort has increased campus safety dramatically and helped to prevent multiple incidents from escalating. Now, two major factors of community policing are building community capital through trust and legitimacy. This trust and legitimacy grow from positive interactions based on more than just law enforcement actions. Community College Bureau personnel have achieved this. This trust and legitimacy by establishing a positive presence at college activities and events, participating in proactive problem solving, and ensuring that communities have a voice and seat at the table while working with law enforcement. A few of the community events where this trust and legitimacy were achieved are the fourth annual LACC culinary cup contest between Harbor Mission and Trade Tech colleges, the Esperanza Immigrants Rights Fair at City College, the Fall Carnival and Mid Autumn Festival at Valley College, and the graduations at online college campuses. So in conclusion, my bureau is proud of our partnership with the largest community college district in the nation. Together, we provide a safe and flourishing environment for the college students throughout Los Angeles County to study and pursue their dreams.
Madam President, members of the board, any questions for the captain on the areas he covered, whether the cadet program, which we'll have a little more information on in just a moment, Mr. McCray, or the community policing?
I just have a question regarding the training. You said it was active shooter and then workplace violence?
Yes, ma'am. So the training that is provided, let me look at it again, is workplace violence, active shooter, emergency management, critical incident strategic planning, and de-escalation techniques.
And so those, all of those trainings are for the cadets and the sheriffs deputies working with us, correct?
Correct. And it's also to all college campuses, all administrators, all staff at the college campuses.
And have you had those trainings at each of the colleges?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask a question? Thank you for the presentation. I do have a question about the cadet slash student worker piece. Have you tried recruiting from the AJ classes, so students that maybe want to go into administration of justice or or field like that?
That was actually going to be my next step. I'm reaching out to those professors to see if there were any students that were, you know, interested.
Okay, because I work in another college district. We have our own police department. It's Lindell Community College Police. We have the same, same challenges with the cadets and the student workers. And then who's paying for the cadets? Does that come out of our budget, Chancellor, or is that coming out of the sheriff's budget?
As you will see under item AA twelve, embedded within the budget itself, there's a cost associated. Mr. McCray, maybe get a little closer to the microphone, but yeah, it is an item that will be embedded within the sheriff's contract because we've asked them to take over, coordinate, and run the program.
Okay, that's good to know. And then what would the hourly rate be? Is it, can you bump that up a little bit for a cadet? Are we going to get to that?
I think it's roughly twenty-seven dollars an hour, thirty hours a week, twelve hours work, adds up to about seven hundred fifty thousand a year. Mr. McCray, did I get that right?
I do have that in.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Great presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Muller. Are you going to go that way?
No questions.
Okay. Veras, no questions?
I think my question is just as far as when I got on this board a couple of years ago is when we approved the contract and with all of the, you know, the cultural changes and support processes and procedures. And I was just wondering, in addition to being more community-centered, how we're ensuring that we're actually effectively doing so between the sheriff's department as well with the district? So are, is there some sort of like collaborative survey or feedback or anything like that between each campus to make sure that we're accomplishing, I think, what we went out to in the new bid? As far as like safety concerns, community concerns, relationship between, you know, the sheriffs as well as the district?
Yes, ma'am.
How are we measuring that? Sorry, that was really long-winded, but how are we measuring that?
So that was going to be my next in this upcoming semester, to do surveys and see how the students and faculty and staff rate the sheriff's department. We could ask any questions as far as how safe they feel, what needs to be done on the college campus as far as lighting, blue phones, or anything like that, ma'am.
And Madam Vice President, in addition to that, on a monthly basis, there is a group that gets together, made up of constituency groups, the sheriff's department, to talk about leasing matters, discussion of cases, et cetera. It's under the auspices of Dr. Burke, and it's a very broad constituency-based group that addresses campus safety and security issues.
Gotcha, because we're about to go into year three of the five-year contract, and I just want to make sure all of the, you know, from inception that we're hitting and our, our community feels like this is the right choice for us.
There was one question, so that could certainly be expanded, but.
Yeah, and then if we can get those reports too as we move through this, that'd be great. Thanks.
So I think my, my question was similar to trustee Hoffman. So the part-time cadet program, that's, that's what you presented on in the first slide?
Correct, ma'am.
Okay, got it. And then like, do we, because I know East LA has a training program or has a few LAPD officers that are doing some, or adjuncts, I believe. Is that, is there any connection between those programs and the part-time cadet program?
No.
No.
Cadet program.
What is, what, I guess maybe what's the difference? Just so I understand, because I always thought that that was a cadet program.
Great question, trustee Hernandez. Ours is more training on the sheriffs and police department officers. We don't have a cadet program. Ours are more, once you become an officer, we do a lot of the training for them.
Got it.
And we're connected with the sheriffs that way.
Got it, okay. That's my, no more question.
Trustee Bwana, any question? Student trustee?
I just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Captain. Let me ask Mr. McCray to walk us through the sheriff's contract, just over, a very broad thirty thousand foot overview of the contract itself, the key elements, and then this is for your item consideration later on the agenda.
And I'll try to be brief. There are a couple of additional slides that I have here that I'll, I'll go through quickly. They may answer or add some additional information to the questions that were asked. My button's not working. And so the contract is a five-year contract. However, we, we come back every year. As a part of the contract, it requires that a new five seventy-five, which is the sort of invoice, so to speak, be signed by both the sheriff's department and the district. In addition, the, the rates change annually as well. But I'll, I guess I'll be brief and go through the slides. County and district entered into the agreement June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. The effective dates of the contract are July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. The agreement itself is comprised of a base agreement and three appendices. The appendices are as follows. Appendix A covers the deliverables, the service that is provided by the sheriff's department. Appendix B is minimum staffing for sheriffs and community college bureau. And appendix C is the five seventy-five that I spoke about, which is sort of like a invoice, so to speak. There's additional information or a narrative portion that covers the student workers and cadets, because they're not full-time workers. They don't appear on the five seventy-five. And so if you've seen that document, it covers all of the full-time sheriff's personnel. It doesn't include the, the student workers or cadets because they are part-time. And in addition to that, the rate and estimations for student workers are discussed in appendix C to establish the maximum not to exceed cost calculations. And the county only bills for the actual hours we worked. There are times where we don't have a full complement of student workers, and so there's sort of some cost savings there. So when you see the number for the student workers, it's rare that we will actually expend all those, those funds that are set aside for that. Appendix A, and I just wanted to point this out, I won't go through all of it, but the sheriff and the district will promote and adhere to a campus community policing approach that will support the district's request for more robust campaign, or campus engagement by sheriff's department personnel. So that's actually a part of appendix A, as well as some other things. And so the community, our campus community policing concept is something that is required. So the cadet program, the sheriff's department committed to establish a cadet program January first of twenty twenty-three. So contract was signed in twenty twenty-two. They weren't required to start their program until January first of twenty twenty-three. And the items that will participate in that are consistent with one of the three county student worker employee classifications. LACC agreed to end its existing program on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two, prior to the sheriff's department starting their program. One of the things I want to point out about the program, and I think this is important, examples of duties, and its examples of duties might include and locking, unlocking doors, foot patrols, high visibility, assisting students with direction on campus, providing escorts, arranging to get help for inopportune student staff vehicles, answering phones and office assistance with campus desk and office duties. I underlined a couple of those. The reason I underline those because it indicates patrols for high visibility and providing escorts. And this is something that I've had to talk about often, and that comes up often. The three items that the county has for student workers, they do not allow for that tasking for those classifications. So those are two specific things that they actually cannot perform unless they're accompanied by a security officer or a deputy sheriff. So the original agreement actually called for hiring twelve, starting January twenty twenty-three. And as a part of the staffing changes that were made in amendment one, and so that was for fiscal year twenty-four, we increased that to eighteen. And that allowed us to actually assign two cadets per campus. The initial agreement only allowed us to assign two on three of the campuses, and the other six campuses were then only assigned one. So the budget itself, again, in June of twenty twenty-two, the board trustees approved the five-year agreement. And it was through the unrestricted general fund. The first year not to exceed was twenty-five million two hundred and nine thousand. The not-to-exceed amount for year two was twenty-five million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. The board of trustees explicitly agreed that any increase in costs will require approval. Again, so that's likely going to be every year with the cost recovery model, as is this year. So the cost for the contract for fiscal year twenty-five, that's the upcoming fiscal year, for services is twenty-four million nine hundred and eight thousand, and the liability fund, that's at three percent, is six hundred and two thousand. And then the cadet program, if fully funded, if fully staffed, I should say, is seven hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. And I have a chart here that shows a comparison from year to year. Last year, we were actually able to make some staffing adjustments, and it was a reduction in service cost. There is a slight increase this year. It's about, represents about four percent increase over fiscal year twenty-four for the upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So the additional cost for cadets, again, is based on a thirty-hour work week over a twelve-month period at a rate of twenty-seven dollars and two cents. And again, the total projected cost for eighteen cadets is seven hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. And again, that's only billed as the hours are actually worked. If there are no hours worked, nothing billed for.
So thank you for that. I would expect questions, so we'll start down on this end with student trustee Baham. Any questions or comment?
Yeah, upon visiting the campuses during my campaign, I noticed that some is not all or most. I didn't do an accurate count. How do you think that the public safety would be affected if we were to do gated around the campus with a badge in with the student IDs? Do you think that there would be, I guess, a decrease of, of public flow into the campuses with that system? And I'm asking only because it seems like there's a hefty line item for this. But if the gate was there, we could probably mitigate some of those costs.
Yeah, so gates are, they definitely can enhance security, but they can also present additional problems. We have gated campuses. Trade Tech is a campus that happens to have gates and can be locked down fairly easily, but they still have challenges. And so it just presents a different problem. I point out that University of Southern California is also gated. They have challenges. And so gates don't necessarily stop the problems. And so you still, you just suggest your security operations in order to account for that. And so just, again, a different set of problems with the gate.
Trustee Bwana, any questions? Deputy Hernandez?
So the, the seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, so that is purely just the student, the costs of paying these student workers?
Correct. And that's if all positions are filled in. And one of the things I would add is that it has been a challenge for the sheriff's department to do that hiring, and some of it has to do with their process. It's a lengthy process. And taking a look at the actual hire dates for those individuals. So they started hiring in January of twenty twenty-three. And in the first six months or the end of that fiscal year, there were only three of the twelve positions that were actually filled. And then between, at the end of December twenty twenty-three, nine of the eighteen positions were filled, because again, we increased that number for fiscal year twenty-four. And presently, only twelve of the eighteen positions are filled. And so we have actually never expended all of the funds that were set aside for the student workers.
I guess my question is just, so this is amendment to the sheriff's contract, so the sheriff is directly paying these cadets, correct? We're amending the contract, the sheriff's contract, and then those dollars go for, what's the typical process with a student worker? Like, say, someone working in the library or something, who pays that student worker?
The college.
How come we are not doing that same model?
We asked the sheriff's department to take over the cadet program and to administer it.
Why? I know.
That was the will of the board two years ago.
And then you said that there was difficulty, though. There already has been a lot of difficulty retaining student worker.
It is. The sheriff, the county hiring process is, and in particular, when it's a public safety agency that's hiring, they have a lengthy background process. And they did make some modifications to that process to streamline it, but it is still a fairly lengthy process. And so as they, early on, they had a number of individuals actually drop off that had expressed interest because of the time that it actually took. And again, they made some efforts to shorten that process. They did have some success in that. Things have been moving a lot faster with that process, but they're, they're still.
Thank you.
I just had a question related to the last presentation. If, if there was an issue, which we had heard before about not having enough support for the mental health component, right, we have one representative from the sheriffs to cover the entire district. Is that, that number was not included in the outline, and so I was just hoping that we were going to work towards providing more services in that degree, you know, because I think majority of the time our students need more, you know, de-escalation support services related to mental health rather than some of the other safety things. And so are there any efforts or proposals to increase that support immediately?
We've talked about that, as a matter of fact, before Captain Gannon actually left, we sat down and discussed that, and he expressed a desire to to have additional resources brought on, another Met deputy. Uh, and uh that is definitely something that I think the district would benefit from. Uh, it's just a matter of, you know, if we do that, then what? Uh, because there are other, there are are other considerations or other things that we need to actually put in place as well. And uh if I had endless resources, I would be able to
Yeah, I I mean, I guess I just would have hoped that that would have been reflected in this additional cost or ask um versus just this program um for justification that we see that there's been issues for, you know, not having an onsite um psychological support person at each district, which, you know, the one person has to commute the nine hundred square miles of our district. And that seems quite challenging if there's an uh emotional emergency um where many of the sheriff's department probably isn't, you know, or or employees or community aren't equipped to handle. And that could be also life or death, um, you know, and trauma for everyone in the in experiencing the the situation.
Yeah, yeah, that's understood. And and I I do want to stress, though, that uh so we have one dedicated Met deputy. However, there is still an entire bureau with sheriff's department. And so if something occurs on a campus and Jeremy, who happens to be that Met deputy, is not available, they still have other uh options or resources within the sheriff's department that they would be able to tap into. It's just that having that person there is a, it's a more immediate response and it's someone that's familiar with the district and the the campuses. And they're better able to, they work with the bit, he worked with the bit teams. And so it's uh it's more tailor-made for us. Uh, but it doesn't mean that we don't have the capability or the sheriff doesn't don't have the capabilities to bring in those resources when needed if someone's ex- uh experiencing a crisis or a challenge in that area. Uh, and the other thing that I that I would add is is with respect to the increase, it's strictly the rate uh from the audit controller's office. There's nothing that we've done in terms of staffing for this uh upcoming fiscal year uh to increase the uh the contract. So the staffing is the same, it's just that the rate has increased.
Um, Dr. Burke, can you just make sure that's part of our questions and our our metrics for social psychological support? Thanks.
Uh, thank you. I'll ask my question last. Trustee Vares, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you. Um, over the past uh um several years that we've had the contract in place, has there um been any official complaints about uh behavior, conduct? Um, any particular part of the process of administering this contract?
Not that I have re- received directly. Uh, now, if you're, we're not talking about personnel complaints for the sheriff's department. I I
Not personnel, but related to this, the the campuses where they're providing the services.
So I I in my travels and talking with campuses, there are, there are always questions and 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 again, we try to address those uh from an operational standpoint. And so uh I'm actually meeting, presently, I have some meetings scheduled and a couple have already been done. We're doing a year-end review uh and we're trying to find out if there are any problems. Uh, again, I I there are, there were some questions about the cadet program that I've had to answer and and clarify some things. Uh, and uh and it, one of the things that comes up often with that is that historically, uh you know, campuses have had a larger number of individuals involved in that cadet program, and now we're down to two. Uh, and so uh it's helping them to understand what the the role uh of these cadets that are actually administered by the sheriff's department, what they're actually there to do. And so that's something that, again, it was just a point of clarification and not necessarily um that there was a complaint that something was being done wrong.
Uh, and a- as we did this sort of long-term survey before the RFP, I think there was um a number of issues raised about attempting to become more efficient in terms of time, probably like one of the biggest things on the list was like opening and closing doors, for example. Have, what kind of progress have we made and as we move forward? Um, is that potentially a place um to see efficiency change?
Yeah, so there are a number of things that uh that are actually in the works that are kind of designed to help with that. And and again, we're always looking at it from an operational standpoint. And um I'm right there in the same building with the sheriff's administrative folks and we talk about things daily. Uh, but the access control project that's underway with the uh the builds folks, the security component builds, uh that's a, that's a big part of it. In addition to that, uh one of the features of the contract requires that the sheriff's department use uh a a system to do actual uh patrol checks and to document those checks. Well, those are things that we have to provide. And and so once we we actually provide that resource, that tool, then they'll actually be able to do that. Uh, we are uh working to uh to shore up our camera system so that there's continuity from campus to campus with respect to our cameras and how they operate or the systems that they operate on. Uh, we have the the security operations center and this contract was actually designed based on the concept of having a security operations center that would help to facilitate security operations. Uh, we don't have that in place yet, so we're working to get that uh uh that built. And so with the the current uh staffing model that we have and and with all of the the procedures that we have in place, that was the idea that we would have uh that system in place to help facilitate operations. Uh, it would also uh uh allow us to have the CAD system and we can actually track how long it takes to answer calls for service and things of that nature. So those are things that that SOC was uh is supposed to help facilitate. We're not there yet, uh but we're still looking at ways even, you know, in this interim period, not having that, but making sure that we deliver service appropriately.
Thank you, that's all.
Trustee Bella?
Uh, no question.
No question.
Thank you, trustee Hoffman?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for being here. So I I'm not to like belabor the student worker cadet piece. Um, is it, so it's included in the new, because I'm looking at the estimated charges and service hours, attach, the attachment that's in here? Is the student worker piece on here? What what would it be?
If you're look, if you're looking at the five seventy-five, it would not be on the five seventy-five.
Okay, so this is like from what just happened? Like, when's this? Oh, you said that they're not going to
They're part-time workers, so they they do not appear on the five seventy-five.
Okay, so the five seventy-five is twenty-five million, five hundred and ninety.
Correct, that's the amount without
Okay, so we can safely say we're adding another almost million dollars for the student worker piece. Um, just so you know, when I got on the board, I've been on the board for nine years. The contract was eighteen million dollars and I think we actually had more um bodies, more more positions with for that eighteen million. I realize like times have changed in nine years. Um, so I'm wondering if you can't find our own students in LACC D and you're processing time, I get it. Took, you know, it's kind of like a personnel commission, they're going through the county. Can you reach out to like our neighboring four-year universities? Because I bet we could find students that way who might be interested in those cadet positions. Um, are you bound to having only um LACC D students in those cadet positions? And is that the best use of our dollars, Chancellor? Would it be better if we went back to the old model where they actually are student workers and, you know, they can work on their work study? And, you know, maybe not as many hours a week, I'm just saying. If, I I just wanted to throw that out there.
Uh, ag- again, it's uh the, so the contract requires that they hire from the the
Community college district, yes. But if it's taking a long time and our students are here with us for two, maybe three years, you know, that doesn't really leave a whole lot of opportunity. I think that's, you know, part of the challenge that you're facing, that's all.
Right, and and again, I, as I, as I pointed out, it it started off really slow and delayed and and uh we were losing folks. And and uh quite honestly, they've made some tremendous uh gains. And I know that Captain Turea has committed to uh uh improve that process even further. And so um I I I don't know that I'm at a point where I would make a recommendation to go outside of uh our district uh in order to hire for student workers.
Okay. And then you just bill us based on what you spend? We're not paying you seven hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars if you're not, if we're not using all the student workers, correct?
No, no, it's only uh for those that are actually uh uh for the number that are hired and the actual hours that they work.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to respond. Mr. McCray works for us. He's the one who on a day-to-day basis, yeah, I wanted to make sure that
I realize that.
Uh, he provides a day-to-day support and oversees, uh pretty strict oversight of of the contract itself. The thinking was a couple of years ago, I'm recalling a question that trustee Vice President Hernandez has. We believe it's reasonable to believe that there are eighteen individuals who are studying administration of justice who want to join law enforcement, who would benefit from learning from and mirroring and growing uh in the campus safety and security uh profession uh through a very, uh what I, what I believe is the largest law enforcement agency in the country.
Largest sheriff.
The sheriff, so we just thought that was a reasonable conclusion that we could get eighteen students at twenty-seven dollars an hour to do that. And we're going to continue to do that. So and I still think that's uh a goal that can be reached.
Okay. Um so again, kind of belaboring the point, but for clarification. So we're we're doing this because we intentionally stopped the program that we previously had to now have the sheriff run this particular program. So does adding the nu- adding to the number of cadets reduce the number of sheriffs that we have already contracting?
No.
How does it work for students because we're essentially a two-year institution? How does that, is the goal for the cadets to eventually become sheriff's deputies? So that you constantly have openings to fill the twelve to eighteen spots?
Not necessarily, but the understanding was that there would be turnover as uh as the students matriculate through the, you know, the community college system. So um there will be turnover and that's to be expected.
Okay, and then I want to piggyback off of the, maybe um Captain Renteria might need to answer that. Um, the concern that VP Eno raised regarding um support for students or faculty or staff to have mental health issues. Um, you all are a county entity and I understand that through this contract, you're working for us. But are you leveraging like the county, Department of Mental Health and Public Health and all of these free resources that are available that assist you in the areas that you don't have sufficient staff?
Yeah, so I can answer that uh uh if you don't mind, Captain Renteria. So uh the Met deputy is actually connected to a clinician from Department of Mental Health. Uh, and so even if they're not actually physically with them, they are connected. Uh, and so he has a partner, uh, so a component at mental health that he coordinates with. And so that is, that's a feature of that program. It's a broader program, it's a an entire unit within the sheriff's department. Again, we just happen to have one designated individual for us. Um, and again, I, and just as any other resource in the sheriff's department, uh if we have a need that exceeds what we actually have in place uh in an emergent situation and a student in crisis is an emergent situation, we can tap into those other resources within the sheriff's department at no cost, no additional cost.
Okay. Um, colleagues, any other questions, concerns? Go ahead.
You mentioned the application process. Um, so we're talking about students, would they have to go through the thirty pages? A thirty-page sworn um application process for the um for this position, correct?
I don't know how many pages the application
Oh, I'm sorry, it's it's a, it's a, yeah, it's the, is it the sworn?
It's pretty lengthy, it's it's not the sworn application, but uh the background packet is probably the biggest portion.
Okay, so is there any wiggle room for like um uh expunged or students that have had, you know, uh run-ins with the law or anything like that? Is there uh, are there exclusions or positions available for students like that? Or is it just because I know that with with that thirty day, I'm sorry, the thirty-page sworn, there's no um, you know, acceptance for for that, so?
Yeah, so that's a background question and I'll I'll let Captain Turea answer that.
So the s- oh, sorry about that. So the student workers, they apply through the county HR. So they have to go online and they go through that process of, and and then we, and then they're put on a list. And then from that list, that's where we pull uh individuals that we reach out to and interview and try to get through the background process. But they don't go through the whole um uh law enforcement, you know, sworn application.
So is the answer to that question, yes, there is the wiggle room?
Well, yes, because there were some modifications made for to get more student workers on, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Yep. That's it. Um, Captain Renteria, Mr. McCray, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, colleagues, so next up we have item L, our combined consent calendar. So we now have um items M one through Z ten. These items include consent calendars for human resources, academic affairs, uh student services, budget and finance, business and facilities. And so may I have a motion and a second to adopt a combined consent calendar for items M one through Z ten with the corrections made to items M two and M three?
So moved.
Moved by Eno? Second?
Bam, second.
Thank you, second by Bam. Uh, roll call, please?
Yes.
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote? Yes, trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno? Trustee Villa?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues. So now on to item double A. These are business items, um AA one through AA twenty. Um, I have a motion and a second to approve.
I'd like to pull twelve. Eight twelve, eight eight twelve.
Eight twelve, AA twelve, um, any others? Okay. So we're pulling item AA twelve. Do you want
No discussion, I'm just
Want to vote separate? Okay. So can we have a motion and a second to approve um items AA one through AA twenty with the exception of AA twelve?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Eno? Second by Henderson, um, roll call, please?
Student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Excellent.
Trustee Bueno?
Everything.
AA one through AA twenty. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Villa?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you. So now for um item AA twelve. Okay.
So moved.
So I have a motion made by VP Eno, is there a second for discussion? I'll second. Uh, roll call, please? No, we don't need roll call?
No.
Are we going to have discussion?
Yeah, just
Oh, but can I, so yeah, so I I know you, I know you pulled it, can I get some for a separate vote? Can I just get a little bit of certification, Chancellor? We are voting on the existing sheriff's contract because we're in the middle of a five-year contract, correct?
That is correct.
Because on, because on this attachment, there is nothing there's nothing about the cadet program, correct? Wh- wh- what is that, what are we voting on?
You're voting on
Because I'm looking at the attachment here, which I'm told the attachment doesn't have the cadet program on here. So where, does it say that we are, pardon me?
Yeah, Ms. Martha, can you help us clarify?
Narrative of the item, it's not in the attachment.
Not in the attachment, as um Director McCray mentioned, it is toward the bottom of AA twelve where it talks about there's seven hundred, oh, I'm sorry, it's in the top paragraph, the very second to the last sentence.
Okay, the total cost for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-four through July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five is blah blah blah. And then plus seven hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven eleven for the part-time cadet program.
Correct, the twenty-five, five, nine, zero is what's on attachment A, the five seventy.
Not right yet. Um, so again, not to belabor that I'm going to, since you pulled it, go first, the cadet program. This will be the first year that the county is administering the cadet program? Or have we been doing, we were doing it through the county and we're not, it hasn't been successful? I'm just trying to really wrap my head around this because I'm not so sure this is the smartest thing to do for our students. Like, I've had great interactions with student cadets at East LA College in particular. What students were I in, were those the county students or were those the students before we switched to the county? So that's, I just need to get myself in a place where I understand what we're voting on.
Right, so this was a established with the original contract Right, so this was established with the original contract that was entered into in June of twenty twenty-two. And the district terminated their program in December of twenty twenty, at the end of twenty twenty-two in December. Sheriff's Department started their program January one of twenty twenty-three, so it's been going since then.
You know, I'm just really concerned about the lengthy application, the applying through the county, the time it's going to take for a student to actually land the job. And have we displaced students that might actually be interested in participating in the cadet program? If they could do it directly with their federal work study or another form of, you know, payment from the college community? I just feel like maybe that's why we haven't attracted as many students as you're hoping to get in the program. And so is there an opportunity for us to go back to the way it used to be, Chancellor?
Not the way the contract is currently written. That's what I understand.
That's correct.
Okay, so for, for the, until this contract is over, we're, we're doing it this way through the county. And there's no wiggle room to hire students that have maybe transferred to a four-year university. I, I'm just concerned that we're like, we watered down our cadet program. We don't have as many cadets as we used to have. And how are we gonna, how are we gonna restore that over the last, next few years? Now that we have more students on campus? Those are my concerns.
Thank you, trustee Hoffman. Before you respond, perhaps you get all of the questions and comments. Start with, you know.
Just for clarification, Chancellor, I thought every year we had the opportunity to review and amend the contract. I thought that was in the contract language for the sheriff's contract.
Every year, when there's a change to the contract, it comes back to the board.
So could we, but we still can't do what trustee Hoffman's recommending that we bring in?
What is the language related to amendments to the contract, Ms. McCray?
So you can amend or we can, we can change deployment, not unilateral. We have to talk with the sheriff's about it and make sure that it's, it doesn't violate any, you know, basic, you know, principles for law enforcement and security. And so they have the final say with respect to that. But in terms of the, of the cadets, so that's something that is, is really up to the district because you cannot, not to hire any of them. And, and, and again, the, the only thing I, I would, I would caution on with respect to that is the, the current model staffing model was contingent upon these folks actually facilitating desk operations on campuses so that the security officers and deputies can be out on the campus. So they would be there in the office to answer the phones, to, you know, monitor the camera systems and things of that nature. So, yes, you have, you can opt to not hire for those positions, but then that leaves a gap that then will have to be, that, those, those, that, that tasking will have to be filled by the SOs and the deputies and it limits their ability then to be out on the campus. And that's really what we're trying to do with them. Have them out on the campus, visible, present, engaging with students, faculty, staff.
Is there a way that you could, that the sheriff's department or maybe even, maybe you as a district employee can hire the students without having to go through the lengthy county process?
So they are county employees and so they have to go through their process. And again, that process has been streamlined. And, and it's, we've, the community contract law enforcement bureau have been working with them. I've met with the division chief and the commanders and they understood challenges this was creating. And they did quite a bit to streamline the process. And so it's about as lean as it can get on that side. And so, and it's, it's actually been working because it has picked up. Is it perfect? No. But it, but it has picked up considerably. And again, Captain Renteria has committed to working to further improve it.
Is this working on our campuses? Are college presidents happy and administrations happy with how the program is rolled out?
I, I, I don't know that they, they necessarily are again, and, and so you have campuses that had twenty-five cadets and, and now they have two. So I, again, the, the tasking changes, the expectations have to change. And so I, whether or not they're happy, I, I I couldn't really speak for that. I'd have to.
Okay.
So, I mean, one of the things that stood out to me about the presentation that I, that I liked, because I, I do think this is effective, is like clipbeat, the patrol, the visual on campus. But it, didn't you say that those cadets would need to be accompanied by a sheriff's deputy to do that work, right?
To do high visibility, visibility patrol or to do escorts? So no, they, those are tasks, that's tasking that's not consistent with that classification account for you. And so their role would primarily be desk operations. And, and again, when, as I was briefed on this, this, the, kind of the process here and how the contract came about and it was explained to me, or my understanding, that, that, that's what their role would be. Is, is that desk operations primarily to free up the deputies and the security officers being in the field as opposed to having that position staffed by a deputy sheriff or a security officer.
Yeah, I, it just doesn't, I, and maybe this is a, like getting in the procurement weeds that I don't understand. I just don't understand why we are amending the sheriff's contract if this is a, to, for a program that we might not hire the full amount and yet we've actually managed on our own, which is an unpopular program. And we don't have a bunch of people knocking on our door to do, but yet we're going to amend the sheriff's contract to increase their contract to do this program with this really lengthy county process. It just, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me at this moment in time when we have folks. We know that down the road, we're going to have to make some hard decisions on, on budget. It doesn't make sense to me to spend a million dollars on this program.
So so we will be, we, LACC D will be paying for student workers that are employed by the county to work within LACC D.
Correct.
So will those students be given credit as student workers? So if at some point they decide that they want to apply for some other county employment, that they can say, I've been a county employee as a student worker? Because I have had the opportunity to be a student worker with LA County?
They are county employees.
Okay, so we're paying them, we're paying, basically paying the sheriff's department to have these county employees that we're not sure that we're going to have.
So I'm not sure if I understand.
So you're asking us to pay for a maximum of eighteen student workers? And you were saying in your report that you've had about twelve?
We have twelve presently. We're only, we're only invoiced for them when they actually work hours.
Right.
So to give you an example of that, there's, so eighteen positions have been approved for the contract for fiscal year twenty-four. We only have twelve. And so that means that the billing has only been for those twelve individuals and only for the hours that they worked. So we were not billed for eighteen.
So you're, you're asking us for the increase to have up to eighteen? Because currently you would be charging for just twelve?
No, the increase is just, is, is because of the rate change. So for fiscal year twenty-four, the rate was twenty-six dollars. And for fiscal year twenty-five, the audit controller adjusted the rate. It's a cost recovery model and now it's twenty-seven dollars and two cents. So that's the increase. The increase is not for any other reason other than the.
So you're just asking us to pay the difference of what we originally contracted for?
Correct, the difference based on the.
And the difference in the increase in, in hourly rate?
Yes. And that was, that's across most of the classifications. It's not just the, the total increase of the, the, the contract is not just because of the student workers. It's actually the, the cost recovery model that has application with all of the, the contracted hours.
And I guess, I'm not sure if we all have the same concern regarding the cadets and the idea of being county employees. It does, the process for becoming a county employee is very lengthy, even to become a student worker. And so we're looking at students that would technically be with us for two years that take at least three to six months to be hired into this program to become student workers. For us, it really would be more cost efficient for us to simply have them as student workers and pay the same money and then have you guys train them. So and we've already been doing this and we haven't received any real reporting on its efficiency. You know, turnover rate of students, you know, are we, are we taking in students, say, in the fall that end up graduating in the spring because they've already been here for twenty-seven years and working on their third degree? You know, we don't, we don't know. So, you know, it, it probably sounds as if we're hung up on the dollar amount, but it's the program, just to know that it's efficient and really benefiting students, which I think was the idea of having the program and having you all run it because it's what you do.
Can I ask one more question? Because you answered it earlier and you said that they have to be LACC D students. But if we took off the LACC D requirement and just to apply for this program, you need to be a student in any institution of higher education, would that make it easier? And then we're still serving students in LA.
So if you made any changes, obviously we, we'd have to discuss it with the. But the, the contract, the language in the contract specifically requires that they hire LACC D students. So if that language was changed or broadened, I, I imagine it, it could potentially bring in a additional pool of folks, potentially.
So we would determine that.
So we can just strike that.
Been saying, but the thing is, why would we say just students in general when we're paying money out of our budget for, that should be going to our students? So unless they're going to be taking classes with us or it, even that doesn't really improve the.
And I'm afraid that, I'm sorry, I, I'm afraid that it doesn't really reduce the time for the application process as well. Because if I'm not mistaken, you also have to do a fitness training for the cadet program, right? Which takes, do you have to do a fitness on top of the application?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any.
There's no, there's just the paper application that, it's just, okay.
Okay.
It's not an arduous position.
For that question. So they're student workers working with the sheriff's department?
Correct.
So are they completing just a regular county student worker application?
Yes, there are only three classifications for student worker with the county and.
So it's not a sheriff's thing at all? It's mainly just the county student worker application? And once they've gotten through that process, they'll be assigned to the sheriff's department working with LACC D?
There are sheriff's items, there are sheriff's items, there are county items, but they are assigned to the sheriff's department. Much the same way a deputy sheriff is a, he works for the sheriff's department, but he is a county employee as well. He's just, his item, his position is assigned to sheriff's department.
But normally student, well, student workers are usually clerical. And, and dependent upon the.
That's correct.
So you all would be having them do things that are non-clerical, but they're kind of clerical.
That's one of the things, that's why I pointed out.
Which is what a lot of our student workers are already doing. So I'm, so I'm not seeing the benefit of having them just be with the sheriffs outside of that being worked into the original kind of plan of staffing for you all. I don't see the benefit of students, but I don't think we're going to ever get there with the questions. So VP Hernandez, this was, you asked to pull the item. What? Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that the board understands that the, the way the item is presented, it's separate in discussion. It's the item as it's noted on the agenda. There are any, if there's direction after the vote to review the part-time cadet program, we can certainly do that and provide any further recommendations. But I wanted to make sure that we aren't making any amendments to the current item as noted on AA twelve.
Can I, can I offer suggestions to the maker of the motion that if we can move the motion and in addition, provide instruction to Chancellor, Mr. McCray?
Correct, correct.
Craig, sorry, my apologies, to come up with various options that could better serve LACC D, better hire students, better options for us to consider. The challenge we have is we're talking about this, we don't have a solution on the table. I think we need some time to find a solution. Or the other option would be to not approve that increase in that area. Include the piece that's there and have it come back to us in a few months or a month or whatever with, with an alternative. I offer both suggestions, but as it stands, we're, we're not making any progress on this item.
We're not.
We should change that.
Okay, so, yes. So we need a, is there a motion and/or a second to?
Kelsey and yourself.
I thought there was one on the table.
Kelsey and you seconded it.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Madam Forester. That's right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Henderson was the second.
Roll call.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote? Trustee Buena?
Are we voting on the item?
The item as it is.
Okay.
After all of that, the item.
No.
No? Trustee Henderson?
Uh, no.
Trustee Hernandez?
No.
Trustee Hoffman?
No.
No. Trustee Eno?
No.
Trustee Villa?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Failed.
The motion fails.
Yes, correct.
So, so before I cast my vote, I was just curious, like, what does that mean?
Well.
There's no increase.
You were quiet.
We're just, we're just, we just didn't vote for the increase. Okay. The increase was just.
I want to make sure that the board understands, I already know, is it just for the increase or the contract itself?
I mean, I just want to.
That's why I was confused.
To clarify, for the record, I do not, I do not agree, I, I might, my vote no is for this, how it's presented. If, if staff and, you know, Chancellor, you want to come back with a a motion that does not include the part-time cadet program? I, I may be more inclined to vote for it, but I will not, I, my vote is for this as it's written. I'm not interested in an amendment, you know, on the floor that's not in writing. I think, you know, if there, if we need to move forward with some sort of amendment for the ongoing contract, that's fine. But my vote is, I, I'm not okay with this part-time cadet.
Can we decouple the matter, General Counsel?
You could amend the current action item with a new motion with the specific.
I have a question. We already voted no on it, so wouldn't we have to re-agendize? This is already a voted motion. We voted it down.
So, but yes, you voted the motion for this particular item, the way it's worded. But because you've noticed it under the Brown Act with respect to the, the contract, there's still that notification that this is an item that can be discussed. If you drastically change it, then yes, you would have to re-agendize it. But what I'm hearing from, from trustee Hernandez is that there's some disagreement as to the cadet costs. Recall, this contract always had the cadets placed under the county. It's just increasing the cost hourly rates of what you, we've done in the last two years. So this is not, yeah, so if, if in fact, at some point in time, that's something that needs to be changed, then that, the whole cadet program is another separate amendment that needs to happen and re-agenda.
Yes.
So it's really about the money.
I, thank you. That, that was helpful. And I think this is a good example of what I've been harping on time and time again. It's a huge issue. There's a lot of controversy around this issue for various reasons. For me to feel confident into casting a vote where I feel fully informed, I need a lot more than a well-done presentation the day of, the day of the meeting. And so I think this goes to show, like, these types of items, we need briefings on these beforehand. I'm not, I'm not going to vote yes on any sort of amendment today until we have a very clear understanding of what we're voting for. What is that increase to the cadet program? It's weird to me that it's only for the twenty-seven dollars that's going to the students. So there's no overhead cost, sheriff's department is taking in. There's going to be no supervision, no training, no sort of overhead cost towards this cadet program. I mean, there's a lot of questions I have and I don't think it's a good use of our time to do it at this meeting. I think it's a good example that we just need more briefing on very, very important items like this.
So, Madam General Counsel, so at the moment, is there any sensitivity, perhaps Ms. Moffett? To help here, if it's, it's a no vote. It's a no vote and the board does not choose to amend the current item, uh, what happens? Or can the board in this current discussion amend, uh, without. Prove the contract without the additional resources dedicated to the part-time cadet program?
And what would the amendment look like?
Okay, if we vote down this contract increase, the budget remains the same. And at some point, we won't be able to make payment to the sheriffs, because when we run out of money. In the current contract without renewing, adding this amendment, we won't have money to pay, we have spent all the money that we've been authorized to pay.
Because they would still increase this cadet's pay, we just wouldn't have authorized the increase.
Right.
In the, in the.
Right. And from what I understand, that's an increase for all the sheriffs and the cadets. This whole thing is just the salary increase that the sheriffs got.
This is why we have no staff, we are part-time board members. If it's important to staff to get this approved at this meeting, then there needs to be that outreach and that front-loading so that we can get it approved at this meeting. That's unfortunate, perhaps we need to agendize this again for the next meeting, and everything's gonna be put on ice till then. Unfortunate, but it's just another reason why we need more information.
President Henderson. The board voted no. We can reschedule the special meeting to the next board meeting. Um, but just because staff doesn't like, we said no, and you're like, reword it. And you can come up with some, some explanation, we voted no, so re-agendize, uh, understanding.
Right, so right now we would need to amend.
We voted no.
No, I'm not saying today.
Oh.
For this, when this. We need to do that and we need to.
President Henderson, we could.
Our next board.
The motion, it's failed, so the agenda item fails. And so we can, if the board desires to re-agendize something different at the July meeting, perhaps that they would be able to do so.
I can hear you, actually, General Counsel.
Oh, I was just saying that, um, the motion has failed, so the action item doesn't go forward. So we could re-agendize the item if different at another board meeting, so the July tenth board meeting. But I think there is some issues with respect to the contract ending, uh.
Ending July first, right?
Yes, I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of that, that's all.
Okay, are we aware of that?
Yeah, we're aware.
Okay.
Okay. So that, so obviously the agenda item fails.
We voted, I'm not sure how you vote no on something and don't have to re-agendize it when we voted no on it in an open meeting where it's agendized. I mean, if there's an open meeting, a special meeting that's called, calls for a special meeting.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that, that would be next.
Right, right, right.
With the amendment.
Okay.
Okay, so we're moving on.
Said that three times, and I, I didn't hear.
One, one last place, I want to make sure the board has full information. Um, on Robert's rules. So, General Counsel, can the board at this meeting reconsider? And then in that reconsideration, make an alternative motion?
So if in fact, it, again, again, we have two issues going forward, we have Robert's Rules of Order and we have the Brown Act. So if you're significantly going to change the item in general, then there would be some concern about Brown Act having to repost it. However, if the board decides to reconsider it, which they can in the same meeting. With a motion to move this item forward the way that it is, they may do so. It's already failed? Or that wouldn't? Yes, even after it's failed, as long as those who, uh. Yeah.
We can reconsider.
You can reconsider it as long as the, um, majority who voted it down says that they want to reconsider it. You, you can consider tabling it as well, but I think that's, yes, so that's an option.
The three board members, uh, three of the five board members would need to vote to reconsider.
No, it's the maj, well, the majority who said no to the contract, which made it fail, one of them has to reintroduce the reconsideration. So. Right, it's the prevailing side of the action. So when the, those who voted no because the action failed, one of those members would have to. Pose the reconsideration, if in fact are reconsidering this item.
Trustee Hoffman, trustee Henderson, trustee Eno, trustee Anderson are on.
Correct.
They would propose an alternative motion.
They would propose reconsideration.
Reconsideration.
Only reconsideration, if we're gonna change the motion, I mean, um, if we're gonna change anything in the wording, we'd have to re-agendize.
If it would, well, if it was substantially different from what you're.
Okay, so.
If all you're doing is reconsidering the item as is.
For the board is. If the contract ends June thirty first. Are we okay with tabling this item until our next board?
Yeah.
Okay. We're okay with it. Motion stand.
Hey, can I offer a suggestion, course of action that we have? The meeting's on June twenty sixth, if we can agendize a special meeting. Allow the staff to take the input that's been provided by the trustees here at the board and at least attempt. Uh, to be responsible with the contract by hearing it then before it ends officially.
We could.
Make that motion.
President Henderson, don't you have the authority to do that if you wish?
Yes, she does, but we can also make a motion.
You can also make a motion, which requires a second, so. Uh, trustee Verris, if you'd like to move that, you can go ahead and do so, and then there needs to be a second, and then a roll call. Please, please repeat it.
Special board meeting on the twenty sixth, our committee day to review this item. Or review the sheriff's contract, whether, with.
So you're tabling.
Being able to take into account the comments made from the director.
So you're tabling the item to that date certain. Which is that special meeting on that date. So that's the motion. Till that day. Yes. And so you need a second for that. Second. Who's second?
Okay. VP Hernandez.
Thank, thank you. Roll call. Oh.
Is the whole table to? Is this a re-agendized?
Of course, if it's a special meeting, we would have to agendize it, yeah, so if we hold a special meeting, we'd have to agendize.
But agendize it as it is, not.
It could be changed, it could be changed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ask a question. Um, at that, before that time when we revisit it, will we get an updated report on status of? You know, um, progress and feedback from how effective these changes are and things like, some sort of report? Report on effectiveness and a return on investment, or not return on investment, but just making sure that. We're investing these funds in a responsible way to. Secure safety for our campus, our students and our community.
Yes. Yeah, that, that's, that's the goal, to provide, with as much information to make an informed decision on the twenty sixth.
So the report that you were speaking of earlier, some annual report or what have you? So some portion of that information be provided by the twenty, what, twenty sixth?
Twenty sixth.
Well, it could, but the annual report, uh, it, it looks at different metrics, the overall, uh. Service provided by the sheriff's department.
I believe, but we haven't received any reports. So. At, what we're asking is to have something that we can work with when we have this meeting on the twenty sixth.
Okay, we just said, they're provided, so I understand what you're asking, you want that information specifically as it relates to the student worker program?
I, I, I think just, uh, uh, eff- effectiveness of, I mean, again, when I got on this board, the contract for our safety, um, partnership. Was to reflect a lot of different cultural changes from past practice.
Right.
And so there were a lot of, um, changes that were suggested, and I just wanted to make sure that they were in fact implemented. Or there was some sort of feedback to identify what was successful and what wasn't. And so if we don't have that kind of information to expand or grow programs for additional funding without sufficient data, um, it, it's, it's challenging. You know, um, as we've heard, right, we're, we're dealing with a lot of. Budgetary constraints, and we want to make sure we're serving our students and our community, and so. We just want to make sure that the costs are valid and, and justified, and the services that we're, we're contracting to have these partnerships with. Are, are worth our funds.
So yes. Pertaining to this program.
So there was a. A motion and a second to table the item, is that what I heard?
To that date certain, yes.
Reconsider.
Right.
So then the reconsideration, members of the board, it's a table, the entire item until June twenty sixth?
And that's not necessarily the reconsideration, Chancellor, it's just tabling the whole item.
Okay, so does that, so that no vote that took place, what is it?
That's it, it fails, it failed, so therefore this item does not pass.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then now there's a new item.
Right, so what, uh, trustee Veris has proposed is then. The new motion is tabling this item to the next, to June twenty sixth. Um, and so there was a second.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the board understands.
I think that gives them the information that they may need to make a decision.
Okay, so we've had a, a, a motion and a second, roll call please.
Student Steve Behams advisory vote. Trustee Boulna?
Nope.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Oh, yeah. But, table, right?
To table.
Yes.
Trustee Eno? Yes.
Trustee Villa?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, colleagues. Um. Thank you. Okay, next up is, um, item BB, facility items BB one through BB twenty six. Um. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Eno. Henderson will second. College, are there any questions, concerns, um, regarding BB one through BB twenty six? All righty then, um, roll call please.
Student Steve Behams advisory vote. Trustee Boulna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Villa?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues, on to item CC, human resources, item CC one. Through CC two, before we proceed to vote on the next two items, I will read the following language for the record. Pursuant to Government Code, section five four nine five three C three, which is part of the Brown Act, we are required. To make an oral summary of proposed action on the salary, salary schedules. Or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for all executive level. Positions as defined in subdivision D of government, government code, section three five one one point one. During the open meeting in which final action is to be taken. In our case, we need to provide such summary for positions such as the chancellor, vice chancellors and college presidents. The employment action now before us is to approve the extension of contract of employment for vice chancellor of educational programs. And institutional effectiveness, Dr. Napole Albo Lopez. Through June thirty, twenty twenty seven, and authorize a one-step advancement to step five. Which is, which will, um, increase her salary to twenty six thousand, three hundred fifty dollars and forty nine cent per month. Effective July first, twenty twenty four, and a five hundred dollar per month car allowance. Will be applied to the base salary and she will be entitled to the same health and welfare, welfare benefits. As are received by other unrepresented classified administrators, including retiree health benefits. May I have a motion and a second on item CC one?
So moved.
Moved by Bella, second by Eno, roll call please.
Student Steve Behams advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Boulna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno? Trustee Villa?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues. Congratulations, Vice Chancellor Alba Lopez. Item CC two. Um, next is the employment action to approve the contract of employment for Ms. Arsely Aguilar. College president of Los Angeles Pierce College from July first, twenty twenty four to June thirty, twenty twenty seven. And authorize a one-step increase advancement to step five. Also with a salary of twenty six thousand, three hundred fifty dollars, three, I'm sorry. Twenty six thousand, three hundred fifty thousand dollars and forty nine cent per month. Of the college president's salary schedule effective July first, twenty twenty four. A five hundred dollar per month car allowance will be applied to the base salary and she will be entitled to the same health. And welfare benefits as are received by other unrepresented classified. Administrators, including retiree health benefits, is there a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hoffman, second by Boulna. Roll call please.
Student Steve Behams advisory vote? Trustee Boulna?
Yeah.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Villa?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Congratulations. Except we have item BB, recommendations from the chancellor. Chancellor, please provide a brief explanation.
Yes, I'm gonna turn to Ms. Gordon to help me out with this, uh, this is the resolution to authorize a debt service estimator. Uh, so this is a required document. That essentially establishes a tax rate for measure CC and measure LA bonds for our district. Uh, and allows us to do so within the twenty four, twenty five year, so this is the authorization for us to sell the bonds. That the, indeed, the public has authorized, Ms. Gordon, did I miss anything important?
No, you're correct, the county needs to have an idea of. What we're gonna do within the next year so they can levy taxes, and this is what we have to do every year. We have to do it, even if it turns out we don't issue any bonds, they need to have that information so they can have money set aside.
This provides us the authorization to move forward this year to continue to sell bonds and build our campuses up. Here we are.
Okay, colleagues, um, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Eno, second by Bella, is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Student Steve Behams advisory vote? Trustee Boulna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Villa?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues, now on to item EE, matters requiring a super majority of votes. Um, this is for emergency resolution for the remediation of water damaged areas of. The campus center basement project at Ellie Valley College in the amount of seven hundred thirty thousand dollars, may I have a motion and a second? Moved by Eno?
Second.
Second by Bella, Bella. Uh, roll call please.
Student Steve Behams advisory vote? Trustee Boulna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Villa?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues, now on to item FF, notice, uh, reports and informatives, there are seven notices. And one informative, no action is required at this time.
Trustee Henderson, um, the one on board policy, on board member compensation, can we pull that aside for more information?
I request to pull item FF two. Anything else, colleagues?
Trustee Boulna, if there are specific questions, I'd be happy to address this.
Can you make it bigger, please? The first paragraph?
No.
All right, oh, thank you, appreciate that, okay, so each member of the board of the LACC D shall receive compensation sum. Two thousand dollars per month if the board member attends all meetings. Except as provided below, member who does not attend all meetings held in any month may receive as compensation amount. Divided by the number of meetings and multiplied by the number of meetings actually attended. Um. So, all meetings, all regular board meetings, I just want to make sure that we don't have to interpret it as I was, as I was reading this. Um, it is not necessarily that clear. Who, who wrote it?
This comes from, uh, the, the policies through CCLC.
Okay. Can we, so each member of the board trustees, comp their two thousand dollars per month. Board member attends all meetings, so all meaning, uh, committee meetings or regular board meetings.
It's both. So it's any meetings that you would have, right? Just regular meetings?
I think it's just regular.
Just regular meetings.
I, I think.
I want to clarify that.
We need some clarification.
Yeah, thank you, good points.
So, except as provided below, a member who does not attend all meetings held in any month. May receive, may. What is may receive as compensation, an amount not greater than divided by the number of meetings and multiplied by the numbers meeting actually attended, um. A member of the board.
Wh- wh- what that means, uh, Dr. Bueno, because I understand how, how Dr. Burke, is that if a board member is absent, we usually follow up with, um, a resolution that excuses their absence under the particular reasons that will allow them, uh, to receive the full compensation. So, but if there's a board member absence and there isn't a resolution, then decommensurate reduction is made.
We have some clarity? I mean, in that language, I mean, or, I mean, it's just, it's not, it's not clear. I mean, I just read it right now, I found one major, one major flaw. I, I'm, I'm just wondering, this is again by our compensation, I think it's by statute. So again, a member of the board may be paid for a meeting when absent if the board trustee by resolution finds that time of the meeting member performing service outside. So what if they have, what if they're just sick or bereavement or, or whatever?
So you can do an absence due to a hardship that's deemed acceptable by the Board of Trustees. And that by resolution would allow that person to be compensated.
Define hardship, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult here, it can be sickness, hardship, I mean.
So it, it says a performing services outside of the meeting for Community College District is ill on jury duty, or the absence is due to hardship deemed acceptable by the Board of Trustees.
Alright, so I think clarifying the meeting part would be, would be important.
Can I point out for the record, uh, having it be a regular meeting, I think is very appropriate, because when you say all meetings, not all trustees are assigned to committees.
Correct.
When you say all meetings, it, it gives the impression that you have to sit in the audience, even if you're not assigned to that committee. So the way that it's currently stated actually is more clear than what trustee Bueno is proposing, and I would prefer not to change that.
So now there's not, there's no vote, uh, necessary today. We will look to make any necessary changes and present it to the board next month.
But how do we do with that? We're going to make changes, propose changes?
What I heard was, was, did you take notes there, Dr. Burke? There was two, um, on the clarification of the meetings, whether it be all or regular meeting?
So trustee Bueno asked that it be corrected to say regular meetings, and trustee Veras, from what I understood, disagreed with that.
I, I just indicated regular meetings.
Oh, just say regular meetings, okay, yes.
The, this concept of all is, is very difficult, and the fact that not everybody's involved, but all committees.
Is that acceptable, Dr. Burke?
Um, yeah, I just don't see where the disagreement.
No, it's my misinterpretation.
Um, yeah, that, that's to identify what all meant, so it's all regular meetings.
There's none.
No, there's none. It was my confusion.
Committee meetings don't count.
Correct.
Okay, or the ad hox. Just say regular.
We're just going to say attends reg- regular meetings.
Thank you.
I do want to address, um, so that it doesn't go unnoticed, um, item FF one. If you could speak on it and.
Oh, sure, well, this is, FF, FF one, this is the Board Policy twenty fifteen, it relates to the student trustee. Uh, we did make some amendments, if, uh, if you could pull that up, please. And the principal amendment, and this is really at the support of the Board of Trustees and others, is that we increased, uh, the compensation to the student trustee, uh, from five hundred dollars to seven hundred fifty dollars a month to, uh, support the, the work there. And this was brought forth and shared with the student advisory committee, and they fully supported the changes here. So, and also talks about some of the rights and privileges, including the, uh, opportunity to cast an advisory vote uh, as well, so we wanted to codify that. As well.
Question, do, we don't need, um, just, I don't know, do, we don't need legislation for that? It's not codified and?
It, not for the, you determine the compensation. You as the board determine the compensation.
Okay, so it's not?
There's no, it's not in code, and that's, we have some level of discretion and really from interest of, of the board that we want to increase, or we had not increased that at some time.
And I would, I would also add that part of the reason that twenty seven, twenty five is on here is because tha- that student trustee compensation is also in that board policy. So that had to be changed in two places.
So I have a question, the, the five hundred dollars, how long does student trustee receive five hundred dollars?
Uh, for twelve months.
No, I, I'm, I'm, how long has it been since the, the five hundred dollars has been identified?
Yeah, it's never been changed.
Never been changed since nineteen sixty nine?
Yeah.
Okay, so why, why aren't we doing more?
Why, of course.
At the.
If you, if you look for inflation, I mean, it probably should be at fifteen hundred, I mean, seven hundred fifty dollars just seems like nothing.
The board's decision.
So could we, since this is?
This, this was a recommendation from the Student Affairs Committee.
But can we, what, would we need to re-agendize this in order for the board to?
This is first reading, you're not going to vote on it today, so you can direct us to change it, and we'll bring it back changed at the next meeting for second reading.
Okay, um, so.
Um, why, why don't we look at the original amount, then, then, then do an inflation calculator and see where it would be at? If you had adjusted for inflation, let's say three, four percent over how many years, what would it be at? I mean, for instance, our compensation, I mean, hasn't been changed, we're still at the same compensation since nineteen sixty nine. I mean, but that would be statute, but here, at least a student trustee should earn more than us, right? Okay.
For at least seven now.
So more, like, literally, I mean, I mean, they're a student trustee, I mean, they have to sit here.
So can we say that we, we do this calculation, but regardless of what the calculation is, that we at least say fifteen hundred?
Well, it might come out to.
Can we do that? Right, but I'm saying it's minimum.
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred. Why?
Yes, you have discretion here, this is your decision.
Because we're not making a decision today, we're looking at. Yeah. Okay. Yes, thank you. That's what we asked, just come back. Okay, colleagues, anything?
Anything else on?
Anything?
On this item?
On this item? Okay. Alright. Alright, so now item GG. Would any of my colleagues like to make any announcements or indicate future proposed actions by the board?
I would.
Okay. Trustee Bueno?
Yes, so I, looking at our, at our legal, at our legal issues that we've had specifically around, and no, I'm not going to talk about any closed session items, but specifically the Medina case, I am, um, requesting that we do look to have an independent assessment directly to the board with regard to dealing with the conflicts of interest, specifically President Henderson. So we've had, we've had specifically attorneys, um, working on this case, that we have no idea who they are. We haven't met them, we don't know who they are. Um, and it's also very important to understand that attorneys are simply advisors. So, under, um, the Attorney Rule for Professional Conduct, a lawyer employed or retained by the, an organization shall inform his or her representation to the authorized directors. We have no idea who is making decisions on this case and other cases. Who are they reporting to specifically? We just don't know. We've had, we know that seven point five million dollars is out there. So where again is that, is that money coming from? Who is making decisions? Are decisions not just on the Medina matter, but on other matters being made, uh, by staff who are unappointed? Question also is, uh, with regard to the November eighth board meeting. I do have a question with regard to whether you had Brown Act violations in closed session. I'm asking that question, I have asked some of the attorneys those questions, they have not responded. Roots of a poisonous tree. If some of the items that occurred on November eighth in closed session occurred, what is the risk to the district? Again, I cannot locate any official meeting minutes authorizing the issuance of the November eighth letter to general counsel. State law requires that putting boards, that working board, public boards do their work in public. Public service should be, uh, requires that issues affecting the public are shared and debated openly. I've been told that this ultimately did not occur, and my question is with regard to the taint. I've asked specifically, what is the scope of authorization? Who has signed waivers for, for the Board of Trustees, since we are the authorized individuals to make the decisions? What are the consequences of law firms acting unilaterally or through senior staff knowingly or negligently giving incorrect information, if they are? What is the actual role of Lieber Cassidy Whitmore with regard to some of these positions who, when we started back in November, uh, were the supposed law firm that was, that was appointed to us? Why has the conflict attorney Elena, Elena Baca not returned emails on some of these decisions? What is the actual role of Peter Dietrich? As an example, right now, we know that Peter Dietrich represents Steve Eddis and Francisco Rodriguez and the Board of Trustees, but we also know through the courageous letter of Michelle Henderson that we have other issues. Where, what are those conflicts? Who hired them and where is the legal authority? Under what authority are they acting considering the rules of professional conduct? Questions reveal that the district is acting potentially without fairness in support of trustees in the Medina matter has failed to involve openness and due process. When we're looking at potentially the violations of the Brown Act on November eighth, some courts have stated that the preferred remedy for violations of the Brown Act is the not validation, not validation. The board should know that violations of the Brown Act is a misdemeanor. These questions have been brought up to the attorneys, uh, uh, on outside counsel, and they have not answered those questions. The reasons why I'm not, the reasons you may not be sure, be aware of this is heavily, is the burden, I apologize. The burden here is on the prosecution to prove that a violation of the Brown Act occurred. I've asked, and I'm now asking in public, was there a violation of the Brown Act specifically on November eighth? Because I've asked several times for. Here at LACC, things are different every day since November eighth, when the board acted in darkness without any presence or observations of any individual. I do want to thank trustee Henderson for bringing to light some of these issues. That's it, and I want to thank you, President Henderson, again for your courage, thank you.
Thank you, colleagues, anyone else?
We're on request to address the board, right? Future items, got it, okay. Um, so this was alluded to a little bit earlier, um. Uh, so trustee Villa and trustee Ino and I have been, um, working with, uh, with Dr. Smith and on housing issues, and so I alluded to this earlier, but I just wanted to put this on everyone's radar. We will be presenting a resolution, um, at FIMPOC Committee around ways that we can expedite our delivery of housing, how we can improve on our current efforts, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. Um, I'm really happy that housing continues to be brought up in our regular board meetings, and so just wanted to make sure, um, that we're aware of that, and that will be coming to the regular board after it goes through FIMPOC. Thanks.
Thank you, anyone else? Alright. Thank you colleagues, so now on to, um, item double H, public comment. Um, the First Amendment and the Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee or public official in the performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on private unrelated matters. Speakers, speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect defamatory statements made, which may subject the speaker to personal liability. Um, Madam Board Secretary, are there any, are there any changes to what you gave me last?
No, I think we're good, thank you.
So, um, first up on item HH one, we have Veronica Enriquez. Is she? You have three minutes.
Oh, thank you, good afternoon. Board of Trustees and Chancellor Rodriguez, I want to thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak today. Um, even though I am the LAMC grievance rep for fifteen twenty one A, I am not here as part of the union. I am here as a representative of employees, um, here as a representative of EOPS, CARE, and NextUp. Okay, I am a product of EOPS, I attended Community College, and I'm a product of EOP at the CSU state level. So EOPS holds a special place in my heart, okay? Before CARE, before NextUp, it was always EOPS. Um, EOPS has been here longer than Los Angeles Mission College, um, and it's here to support students. It's sad to see that at Mission College, EOPS is being taken away from a dean who has fought for their students at Mission College, who has been fighting for to keep the monies of EOPS, CARE, and NextUp for its intended purposes. I was not going to come here today, but then I heard a colleague say, I'm not understanding why Dean Villegas Vidal doesn't understand for the improvement of the campus as a whole. EOPS is here to help students. EOPS is not here to fund staff for other departments that are not EOPS, CARE, or NextUp. So I would like to, the support, I guess, to keep EOPS, CARE, and NextUp with the dean who has been fighting to keep all the resources of these programs for the students. Um, EOPS, luckily enough, is one of the few programs statewide that continues to get money from the government, governor. And I believe we even got a COLA increase, okay? And I understand, right now, I'm being lent to EOPS. Okay, I'm not a permanent EOPS employee, I'm just being lent to them right now, um, because they are understaffed. But EOPS, I was at EOPS at Valley for over thirteen years, and like I said, when I was at Community College, I was part of the EOPS program, and I was also a student worker. And now at Mission, I get the opportunity to come back to EOPS. For whatever reason, I always, I come back to EOPS. So I would like to throw my support for EOPS, CARE, and NextUp to stay and remain with the dean who has been fighting to keep the funds for their intended purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ramon Munias.
Are you, the order is? You, do you want to wait for? This is Ramon, or you, you want to, or you changed him, right? The, okay, go ahead and, we'll put him forth, I, I penciled it in on yours. We, we, okay, then Jose Luis Ramirez?
So will Ramon not be speaking?
Yeah, Ramon will be speaking after the group.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I penciled it on your speakers list.
When I start this board, my name is Jose Luis Ramirez, former vice president of Student Services from two thousand and two to two oh four, two zero zero four, under the mentorship of Dr. Adriana Barrera. At this time, I've been working at Mission College primarily, part timer at West and Pierce for the last thirty five years. I come here to support my coworker and friend, Luti Villegas Vidal, so that she can remain. in charge overseeing the EOPS program at this time. So there's two questions. How do we reward experience, integrity, integrity and success? Perhaps only our president knows. I believe Ms. Hernandez was the board person at our commencement last week. That's how I measure success and try to reward it. Our keynote speaker was, is the daughter of, of one of our advisory community members and he's here today. Ruben Rodriguez from Pueblo Salud, nonprofit in the city of San Fernando. Ms. Rodriguez, as you know, is the mayor of the city of San Fernando. More importantly to me, as the senior counselor in the entire college is the fact that on the stage there were three of our EOPS students. Rodrigo, my business student, is the ASO president who welcomed the crowd and the graduates and the faculty and classified employees and student workers. You know, we seldom talk about the value of student workers in every particular program, especially EOPS. Our salutatorian was also one of our students. As she placed the, as she, as she recited a place of allegiance to the audience. Very dear to me is her valedictorian, also my psychology student. Who is a single mother. And we assisted her in developing a network of support. So she has been part of Cal Works, the seven student programs and EOPS. There is a remedy that we'll be seeking individually and that's the reversal of the president's decision to remove Ludi Villegas Vidal from overseeing our EOPS program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, um, Ernesto Ayala on Zoom. Okay, thank you. So Norma Ramirez.
Good afternoon, all members and chancellor. Congratulations to the, to the student trustee Baham. Good to see you. I can be for, I can be for you to demand no changes in the EOPS program at Mission College. Why dismantle the program that has been successful for so many years? Replacing Ludi Villegas, Ludi Villegas Vidal from overseeing the programs that were mentioned before will be very detrimental and most, and the most disrespectful and wrong decision made. You have some of the most dedicated humans working in this office. And it has taken them more than twenty-five years to have a successful program. Who is Ornelas to come and decide? Let me just, um, move Ludi Villegas. It doesn't happen like this in our, in our community. In our community, you come to us, community members that have been very involved all the time and you consult with us and you talk to us and you let us know. You include us because at the end we're stakeholders. I'm going to have three recommendations at the end of my presentation. And for this issue, I do recommend Dr. Barrera, last doctor, doctor Barrera. Oh, forgive me, Dr. Barrera, you were great. Doctor Ornelas to be helicoptered out of Mission College. She needs to be helicoptered out of Mission College. She's making decisions, wrong decisions, acting as a dictator. Many complaints have been made. On the other issue, I am very disgusted. I have read through the LA Times, the ten million dollars lost in the lawsuit. It pains me. It pains me because I learned that a million dollars pays for two hundred classes. It pains me that you already spent seven million dollars in legal fees. It pains me that some of you are being harassers. I know there's some decent people here. I know that, but I also know who the harassers are. I know who, who are harassers. And that is just the shame. Steve Edes is acting like a thug and he needs to resign. Francisco, the harasser needs to, to take a leave. And by the way, this Mexican woman here doesn't serve you and doesn't like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next up we have Ramon Muniz.
Good afternoon, Chancellor Rodriguez, President Anderson, members of the board and the honorable school presidents. Honored to be here. One thing that we need to be aware of, what happens at one campus will have an effect on the other campuses. I've been involved with EUPNS during my time as director of EOP partnerships at Cal State Northridge. I have worked at every single one area schools and have served as an advisor to EUPNS to a majority, if not all. The danger is this. There's always conversations at the state level. One conversation that was going around roughly before the pandemic. EUPNS is no longer needed because we have reached equity. Do you believe that? We have reached equity? Unbelievable, but that's the mentality. Those conversations perhaps have died down, but those conversations continue. What happens at Mission College is going to have an effect on the rest of the community colleges, not just in our system, but statewide. Always look for a crack to bring down the wall. By weakening the position of EUPNS by allowing someone who comes in with no experience is part of that weakening process. EUPNS is a sacred program. First generation, historically low income, undocumented, foster care. How many of us feel that position? I would say a good number of us. If you begin to take away the funding, which is the foundation of that sacred work that is done, then you loosen and you weaken what is EUPNS. There is much, much to lose. But steps need to be taken to assure that EUPNS is strong because it's viable and it meets the needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Kyle Skinner. Welcome. Mr. Skinner, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, board, trustees and madam president. I'm here to give my support for my dear friend, Ludi Villegas Vidal. Ludi is a champion for EOPS students and she's a champion for the underdog. I've known Ludi for probably over two decades. And during this time, Ludi has done nothing but champion the EOPS mantra. She is an advocate for students and she has so many great qualities and she's a real asset to the district. Ludi is professional. She's hardworking. She's dedicated. She is a real advocate for students. And the irony is that one of her really redeemable qualities is that she has high ethical standards. And the irony is that it appears that her ethics is what is at the center of this, uh, decision that is being made. And that is, Ludi's ethics would not allow her to do anything illegal or, or that would take funds away from the EOPS students and the EOPS program. Her ethics will not allow that, but apparently that may have gotten her into some hot water. So I implore you, board, to use your power, to use your influence to not allow Ludi to be taken out of the EOPS program. The students love her. They need her. She is a champion for this program. She has been a champion of EOPS for many, many years. She has proven that and evidenced by some of the speakers who have already come before to show you what, what they feel about her. And I just think it would be a shame to, um, remove her from, uh, the EOPS program. She's dedicated her life, uh, her life's work to that program and she deserves to remain the, uh, the EOPS director. And so I, I want to give my full support, Ludi. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I truly apologize. I had skipped over one of our speakers on our list, Lourdes Brandt.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor, guests. My name is Lourdes Brandt. I began working as an EOPS counselor in this district in nineteen ninety-six and my topic today seems to be EOPS. In September of nineteen sixty-nine, as a response to the Civil Rights Movement, Extended Opportunity Program and Services, EOPS, began with the passing of SB one sixty-four, Alquist. This year marks the fifty-fifth anniversary of this highly successful student support program and a number of events are being planned locally and throughout the state. In two thousand and nineteen, at the fiftieth anniversary of EOPS, this board passed a resolution in support of EOPS and designated September as EOPS month. Region seven will be asking this board for a similar resolution for two thousand and twenty-four, so that will be coming. It is almost identical to the last one this board supported with one exception. There is proposed additional language addressing the need to safeguard the integrity of EOPS categorical funds. Given that hold harmless will sunset in two thousand and twenty-five and the concomitant shrinking of the unrestricted general fund, it would be tempting for colleges to look to categorical programs to help fund positions or services. But this is supplanting and supplanting is in violation of Title V. It starves a program of the resources it needs to help students and equals benefits and services which students then cannot receive. Supplanting isn't an abstract budgetary concept. It has happened in this district before. And reportedly and apparently it is happening now at Mission. I urge members of this board to have a zero tolerance policy for supplanting and to articulate and enforce that policy. EOPS should be celebrated for fifty-five years of student success, but its integrity as a program should also be preserved. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now on Zoom, we have, please forgive me, Aleah Harris.
Yes, this is Elia Harris. Um, good afternoon, good evening to all the Board of Trustees, Madam Chair and Chancellor Rodriguez. My name is Elia Harris. I was a student at Mission College, um, years and years ago. I just want to say that EOPS has saved my life. It saved my mother's life. It has helped us with our, with our schooling. And Dean Villegas means a lot to, to us. And she has done a lot for students. She has done a lot for the program for thirty years. And the fact that this president decides to take it away from her is kind of disgruntling and most definitely a disaster. I am asking that this, this decision needs to be reversed and this president should be fired for supplanting funds to hire classified, to try to fund classified staff. It's unacceptable. It's illegal. Everyone knows better. She knows better. And it's unacceptable. So I'm urging you to please keep the EOPS program under Ludi Villegas Vidal, who's not only my former boss, not only a friend, but she's also considered family. She has done a lot for students. She's done a lot for the community. She's done a lot for everybody. So I just urge you to please, please, please consider firing Dr. Ornelas and to consider getting back the EOPS program to where it belongs, which is under Ludi Villegas Vidal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, um, we have Mr. Alondo Quavens.
Madam President.
Yes.
Don't start my clock. I want to give a recommendation, okay? Must you? You guys need a training in robbery of order, please. Someone should train you, but we don't have all this embarrassed that everybody watching. I'm just saying. I hear you. Okay. Lupin?
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm.
Three minutes.
Okay, okay. This district, I saw the guys become a cesspool. You have extortion. You have corruption. You have retaliation. You have sexual harassment in the millions. You have misappropriation. Remember I talked to you guys when I came a couple of months about EOPS? I talked to you guys about EOPS. I heard they misappropriated a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, Francisco, your favorite president. Hundred and thirty grand. Someone should investigate that. Did you hear me, Ms. Anderson? Hundred and thirty grand EOPS misappropriation for people that were not supposed to be paid. Hundred and thirty thousand taken away from the poor. You heard Mr. McKibler talk about the poor, David. Okay, hundred and thirty grand ticket for the most vulnerable people in our district, EOPS. And that Francisco is still has the job. Unbelievable. Everybody who speaks up, they get retaliated, they get fired, they get put on leave. Everybody who does abusive power behind Francisco gets rewarded. Come on, guys. I, I know, seriously, I know you guys don't give a shit. I know you don't give a shit. You wait for this to top and next month. But at some point it's going to catch up that we're not going to stop coming. We're not going to stop coming and we're going to keep on speaking the truth. Okay, who's paying for various legal fees? If he's being sued for personal action, the board's not going to have to be paying for that. Someone should give an accounting who authorized that decision. The chancellor doesn't have that power. It's the power of the board to make a motion to say, we will pay for various legal fees. Okay, fine. That's your decision. But for someone to do that arbitrarily? Unbelievable. So what? His favorites get rewarded? His enemies get punished? Pretty sad, Francisco. I hate picking on you. You're a Chicano, man. But you're a disgrace as a Chicano. I could tell you that. I always believed, remember when we were young, you say, the wet man is a racist bastard? And when we get the power, we're going to take over? That was the worst thing that ever happened, having four Latinos on the board. It's a shame. It is a shame to claim, vive la raza, que vive la equity, que vive la chilada. Oh, man. That's, oh. Do something for all those brown kids, all those homeless kids that came to these areas. Don't ask them to go to Pierce College. They probably have fifty cents. Okay? Get that foundation money. Give the money for this so that you can go to all these dinners to buy friends or to those kids. They need it. Okay? Hundred and thirty grand, I heard, EOPS misappropriated. And she still has a job? If that was me, you would have fired me. Day one, you would have Jana Williams and your dark state and Deacon, everybody coming after us. Okay? Thank you very much. God bless you. I don't know what else to say. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. So next up, we have item HH two. And, um, list of speakers first up, we have... Forgive me.
Nathan Lewis.
Nathan Lewis.
I'd like to start off by saying, um, I'm surprised I really be here, to be honest with y'all. I mean, I don't think we, I mean, to be at this level was, oh, I'm sorry. Be at this level, um, of things without any progressive discipline was, to me, is just surprising. You know, but I'll start off by saying, although part of these claims, you know, they're, I'm, I'm here fighting for my child. You know, um, I, I say although, um, all of these claims may be violent in regards to my attendance, it also suffers and lacks the truth. And the truth of the matter is, um, I feel I'm being retaliated against and targeted due to my constant complaining about the culture of the campus as well as the infestation of rotens. Um, I know we have a short time and I wish we had more time to speak about it. You know, but I haven't had any progressive discipline for two years or even more. No counseling memos, no verbal, all written, uh, um, counseling memos, um, in the time period. Um, they want to leap forward the process when the process is in place for a reason. It's, it's supposed to be important. Um, the steps of our, um, chain of command are supposed to be important. I've had a Title IX investigation interfered with. Um, I've been denied from FMA, uh, three or four times. You know, and that just shows you the close culture and a close knit relationship with upper management. You know what I'm saying? I have said it before and I'll say it again. Um, a man that wears too many hats in our district would be a dangerous person. You know, um, um, you know, uh, there's no, um, I in the word T. And I'm a team player, but when there's no team, or when you find out the team that you're playing with is against you, now what do you do? You know, the culture of this campus that I work for has been destroyed by the upper management. They stick together like a gang. You know what I'm saying? If I don't look out for you, um, then they won't, I won't, me, if I don't, if I don't look out for you, I won't look out, me, like that, that type of thing, that mentality. You know, if I won't look out, if I don't have your back, then they won't have your back type of mentality. I believe this should be dismissed with no prejudice. Now, I, I, I would also like to say, um, we are understa, we have been understaffed for three years. You know, um, now we come in every day, um, and, and, and work, work our tails off. And we've been understaffed. We beg these people for help, um, to hire some help. You know, when you come in to work at four thirty and it's one or two people working a forty, uh, um, acre campus, it's ridiculous. You know, you know, and we get the job done. But that's why I say it's surprising that I'm here. You know, it's a, I'm surprised that it came to this level. You know what I'm saying? From this Kelly hearing and all that, without any progressive discipline, that's our policy that we supposed to, I, I was surprised. Nobody's told me anything about, uh, uh, um, my attendance at all, you know, at all. Um, and, and the paperwork it says, uh, there's no calls, no shows. Prove it. I have no documentation with none of that. Thank you very much for your time. Good day.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Akela, Keela? Thank you. Rotten?
Rotten.
Rotten.
Um, good, uh, good evening, everybody. Um, good to see everybody again. Last time I was here, I was fighting for my union to get extra wages. Now I'm here fighting for my own job. Um, thank you to Chancellor, Madam President, to see you guys. Um, I have a lot of paperwork here, but after speaking to my mother on the phone this morning, I'm going to just speak from my heart. I just graduated from West LA College, um, June fourth, and I have that grad May twenty-third. Your jokes was funny. That's cool. Usually I have a lot to say, but I've been lying to my children for the last sixty days about how it worked. Lying to my children, all four of them. Yes, I'm on the dean's list. Yes, I have all these character letters. My father's been in the district for almost thirty years. I just want to make sure my kids got insurance. I screw up toilets so my kids can have insurance. I'm not here to really talk about the politics. You guys know. You guys know what's going on. Everybody's in here human. This, it's hard to remember when Bynar Ruston walked into the room when an own council member tried to tarnish his reputation. And Dr. King went along with it. We don't talk about that side. And that's the hard part about politics because I represent the community. The very reason why this board is here is because of people like me and my sister to the left. I just walked the stage in depression. I wasn't excited for black grad and y'all know how black grad is. I was sad, irritated. The president even brought up Enterprise Middle School where my eighth grader just graduated. And his, and his principal was my fifth grade teacher, the man that encouraged me to become a teacher. I start Cal State LA in August. How am I going to be able to afford to take care of my children at Cal State LA, four of them, to be exact? So it's a little hard, hard to hear. I know you guys have been here all day talking and it's a lot of politics and financials and backbiting and things like that. But as my background in the community organizing, I'm, I'm used to these things. Just check out my resume. This isn't the first time I speak to people with high degrees, high salary and high power. But I, I want you guys to always remember that four years ago, we were all equal. Four years ago, we were fighting over toilet. Four years ago, we were fighting over water. So it's a little frustrating to me and I don't want to get into all of that because I'm tired. I'm really tired. I walked the stage with a frown on my face and Dr. Michelle Longkoff said, make sure you take a picture after I shook the president's hand. And the same president wrote me off to get my job terminated. Imagine how I feel right now in this current moment. I'm a product of EOPNS. All of my teachers have great things to say, staff. But my bosses don't want me to be here because I showed up to clean fourteen restrooms by myself on many a days. And all I did was ask about some complaints in our union. Now I have termination papers and that's a little unfortunate. So I'll let you guys dictate what that is. But I wanted to say this and I speak a little bit better than my coworker. And that's just a gift. But I know what it was like when we were trying to make sure we eat lunch, make sure we have gas and make sure we make it to work. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you. So next up, we have Dr. Eric Wang on Zoom. No? Yes? Oh, no, that's not Eric Wang. I can speak? Is he online, Lupin?
I'm here. Should I, should I go? Or I see you have another speaker lined up?
Sir, go ahead. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you, everyone. Um, and I'm speak, I'm speaking on, just for clarification, I'm speaking on item, uh, II three. So, um, good afternoon and almost deep, good evening, uh, esteemed Board of Trustees. Um, I'm Eric Wong, AFT fifteen twenty-one grievance representative at West Los Angeles College. On March sixth, two thousand twenty-four, you heard me speak in defense of counseling faculty Leslie Ann Picazo, whose contractual rights were violated numerous ways with regard to her peer tenure evaluation. Later that day, you voted four to three to not renew her contract. It is my understanding that Ms. Picazo's case will come before you again today. Uh, I want to take this opportunity to remind you of the egregious faculty contract violations made by West Administration against Ms. Picazo. Among them, one, the use of homemade evaluation forms to replace contractual evaluation forms and solicit anonymous hearsay comments. Evaluators on Ms. Picazo's committee protested the use of these non-contractual forms, at which point West Union representatives communicated multiple times that such forms are invalid and in violation of the faculty contract. Two evaluators thereby filed dissenting opinions, one of whom spoke before you in March and stated that they never agreed to the use of these homemade evaluation forms. The contractual form is still missing entirely from the evaluation. Two, faculty evaluations are peer-driven. Ms. Picazo's initial overall rating was satisfactory, but then the Vice President of Student Services unduly influenced the faculty peer committee and redirected them to change Ms. Picazo's overall rating to needs to improve on the basis of the unauthorized homemade evaluation forms. Three, Ms. Picazo did not have a single documented performance issue until after her evaluations began. And only then did West Administration retroactively produce any such documentation. Given these serious contractual violations, I ask you to reverse your decision from March sixth and grant renewal of Ms. Picazo's contract. As you move into closed session, please remember that Ms. Picazo will not be allowed to defend herself. The union also might not have a voice in the room. However the conversation unfolds, I ask you to consider objectively whether or not Ms. Picazo truly received due process and if her termination is justified by cause. Thank you for your conscientious reconsideration.
Thank you. You want to give your opinion for that?
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor. My name is Priscilla Ozan, representing, uh, LOPA ninety-nine. I'm here to represent Akela Rotten and Nathaniel, Nathaniel Lewis. If you review their character letters that were submitted to you, you will see that they are recognized and appreciated for the hard work on campus as custodians. Although they have great work ethics, the reality is, is that they are burnt out physically and mentally from being severely understaffed and dealing with a, a work environment that is toxic. When you are overworked and covering multiple assignments daily and dealing with the climate that is toxic, it will take a toll on, on your body and you will get sick. And, um, you'll get burnt out and you'll take off so you can recover. We believe this disciplinary action does not warrant a dismissal for several reasons. Number one, there was no progressive discipline action taken, um, or attached to the unsatisfactory notice to show there was a problem, uh, with their attendance. They were, um, taken by surprise. Number two, more importantly, the unsatisfactory notice for their attendance came surely after they both complained about the conditions of their work environment regarding the rat infestation at West LA College and issues with, uh, the custodial supervisors harassing and bullying LOPA ninety-nine members during a LOPA ninety-nine meeting that was held on campus. Because these complaints were made by Mr. Rotten and Mr. Lewis, we believe that they were targeted and retaliated by the operation manager and the president at West LA College for raising these concerns. We presented these, um, arguments, uh, during the color, during, uh, their Scully hearing, uh, process. Also, I want to, uh, point out that we believe, I mean, I want to point out that we have a contractual language that allows LOPA ninety-nine members to use sick, vacation and personal necessity time when needed. This applies to all employees. Therefore, dismissing someone for using their, a lot of PTO would violate the district's own policy, our contracts, state and federal laws. We ask that this board rescinds their, uh, unsatisfactory notice for dismissal and can, uh, consider the concerns, uh, that was raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ozan. Uh, next up, we have, um, Angelica Hermosola, Hermosio.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Rodriguez. My name is Angelica Hermosio Hernandez and I am the Counseling Chair at West Los Angeles College. I stand here today to share with you that the West Los Angeles Counseling Department largely consists of hardworking individuals that have the common commitment to serve our students and community. Recently, there have been multiple attacks by our West Los Angeles College AFT representatives to create divisiveness, confusion, intimidation and spread misinformation regarding our department, the administration evaluation, uh, evaluation process, amongst other things. This past semester, our local AFT representatives wrote a concerning resolution, which was never brought to the attention to our tenured faculty nor the department chair, myself. Instead, this document was produced with faculty outside of our department and college. This lack of transparency, communication and overstepping is unacceptable and has to stop. Our representatives are supposed to represent all faculty in the utmost ethical manner and we must be free from retaliation. We must hold high expectations for all faculty and take accountability. I ask that you listen to the folks that work tires tirelessly to serve our students day in and day out. At West Los Angeles College, we strive to have a department of excellence, integrity and unwavering commitment to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have Kyle Skinner. Would you want to speak a second time?
Good evening again. Uh, I come in support of my West Los Angeles Counseling colleagues and the college as a whole. Decisions matter. The reputation of the institution matters and following process matters. Your decisions as a board could potentially undermine the authority of the college president at West LA College and the entire process that was followed by all parties involved. We should not give the appearance that politics are at play in making decisions. The district and this board are in desperate need of credibility and trust. And when you make questionable decisions, it undermines credibility and trust and lowers the morale of the very institutions we're a part of. We have to treat the process the same for everyone or it doesn't work for anyone. The process matters because the public is watching. The other eight colleges are watching. And more importantly, your constituents are watching. The district and the board will ultimately be judged by those it serves. And so decisions matter. How we operate and conduct our business matters. The appearance of impropriety matters because it creates a toxic environment that can only be fixed by doing the right thing and making the right decisions. This should not be about who we like or dislike. This should be about following established rules and procedures and not allowing politics to dictate the decisions. We have to make decisions in the best interest of the collective. And we should be committed to the development and enrichment of our students who we serve. These decisions should not be based on undue influence by one or a few people. We need to hold ourselves accountable and stand by the decisions we make. We are here to make the best decisions for our students because that is who we serve. Decisions should not be made for personal gain or based on emotion or the personal gain of any one individual. We should trust ourselves that we have made the best decision based on the presented facts and not emotion or undue influence. We ask that you sustain your initial decision in the best interest of our institution and our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have, um, Robert Hendricks on Zoom.
I'd like to thank the board for being allowed to talk. My name is Bobby Hendricks.
I'd like to thank the board for being allowed to talk. My name is Bobby Hendricks. I'm a retired counselor from West L A, retired last year. When I left, I was the Chair of Counseling. I presently am working as an adjunct counselor at West now. I would like to say that I support the administration and the Counseling Department at West. In their decision to release an employee. I'm here to back up the, the current Counseling Chair in her feelings. I do not take this, this stance lightly. In my opinion. I saw enough red flags to justify this decision. The cost to hire and maintain a counselor through retirement in this district is a very costly enterprise. We're talking about more than five million dollars. And that money, I think, requires that we should expect the best quality in both student services and in employee collegiality. Lastly, I'm afraid that by overriding the decision of administration in the Counseling Department. You may be setting a precedent that, that will affect L A C C D and the other. Sister colleges and, and what they can do. That's about what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Tracy Jones.
Good evening, Chancellor Rodriguez and Board of Trustees. My name is Tracy Jones and I'm a counselor at West L A College. I've been a counselor in this district since twenty fifteen. And there are just a few things I'd like for you guys to take into account. When it comes to making decisions about what happens in the West L A Counseling Department. A best practice in any counseling department is to have counselors who are student centered. And collegial, especially in a department like ours where the vast majority of our counselors are new counselors. And new tenure track counselors. Counselors depend on one another for information as part of our continuous and formal training process. So when there is a documented problem with a counselor or a counselor is not able. Or willing to integrate themselves into the department culture. This can be disruptive, resulting in a decline in morale in the department. And when morale is, and when morale declines, counselors, especially less experienced counselors. Are afraid to share their vulnerabilities and the staff becomes divided and siloed. When this happens, it impedes learning and has a negative impact on our ability to serve students with efficacy, efficacy and care. Most of us spend the majority of our twenty-four hour day with our colleagues. And a toxic environment is a difficult one to work in. So when choosing a team member, we want to have someone that is collegial and is able to work with our students and our faculty as well. No one wants to work in a toxic environment, nor should they have to. So we'd just like for you to take those things into consideration. And thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. And next up we have Loma Bucasa.
President Henderson, she's not on Zoom. She's not online. Oh, she's in person.
I'm right here. You almost got my name this time. It's all right. I'm Lorna Bucasa. And I'm a counselor with the West L A Counseling Department. And I'm here to address the West L A Counseling issues and the decision made back in March. To not renew the contract of Ms. Picasso. And to honor the recommendation of our administration. I support that decision by the board. It's very important that our system work with integrity, support and accountability. I've been a counselor for almost thirty years. And the vast majority of counselors are doing it for the right reasons. They want to help students succeed and to accomplish their goals. They want to be part of an effective and cohesive team. And they appreciate their jobs and the mission we have. But there are a few. Who can diminish and destroy the effectiveness of a counseling department. For whatever personal reasons, bad motives, hidden agendas. But at West L A, we've been conscious of promoting a healthy atmosphere. But to do that, the system of administrative evaluations needs to be respected. At West L A College, our administration took the time to investigate. To listen to all facets of the Counseling Department. And to come to a decision that was best for the whole department. Listen to those of us who have no favors to trade, no particular agendas to achieve. Who don't necessarily have the friends in high places. Let us do our job of creating the optimum counseling environment. There need to be consequences when there are hurtful and damaging actions by counselors. For instance. We have some probationary counselors. Who reported being demeaned and intimidated by the counselor in question. And they were afraid to show their face here today. They were afraid to come in person. That has to stop. Please stand behind your decision made in March. Listen to the counseling faculty in the department rather than listening to the louder voices. Of those who have their own agendas and do not represent us. Show your constituents that this board cannot be manipulated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And last up, we have Zuri Barrientos. Are they online?
Yes, they are. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, good evening. Hi, Chancellor. Hi, Board of Trustees. My name is Zuri Barrientos and I work, I'm a custodian at Los Angeles Valley College. And I've been dealing, I haven't experienced, I have experiencing a hostile work environment. Including harassment, retaliation. And bullying from my immediate supervisor. The operation manager, the director, the gardener supervisor slash foreman. And M and O employees. Who receive favoritism from management. Additionally, my complaint has been ignored by administrative B P and. And the college president for almost a year. And now I am also facing issues with the district's H R. This all started when I decided to speak up about my work rights. I am a good employee. I'm, there's nothing that I have done, but do my work and do it well. No write-ups. I have no write-ups, no complaints against me. On the contrary, I have received letters from faculty. And staff expressing their satisfaction with my work and conduct. Also, there has been three incidents involving my family van. The first incident could have killed me and my family because someone tampered with my, with my van's brakes. I decided to make a, we, I made a sheriff's report and it was sent to the VP Sarah Song. This report was ignored. It wasn't investigated. It was just ignored. After, even after her knowing that I was being harassed because I had already spoken to her about this issue. This was ignored and put away like if it was not important. Now the, now I'm dealing with H R, the district's H R. Claudia Abbott investigating me due to another incident with my vehicle. Where my vehicle got damaged because a gardener weed whack around my van and didn't follow the protocols. It damaged the paint, it damaged my van. The only mistake I made according to them was as politely, as the gardener politely.
Thank you.
Had done it.
Thank you. We also had two character letters. From Jesse Salsedo and Dr. Swamenoff that were presented. Now, we're moving on to closed session. The Board where act will recess to closed session in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act Government Code, sections five four nine five zero. And the Education Code to discuss the matters on the posted closed session agenda pursuant to Government Code, section five four nine five four point five. May have a motion in a second to recess to closed session. Okay, nobody wants to go. Henderson will make the motion. Eno will second.
Gladly second.
Roll call, please.
Student trustee Abraham. Trustee Buelna, trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez, trustee Hoffman. Trustee Eno.
Yes.
Trustee Vella, trustee Verres.
Thank you.